Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Pro Temp Scalen.
Present.
Councilmember Bowman. Councilmember Farrelletto. Councilmember Galumbek. Councilmember Noakowski. Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
For Ms. President.
Thank you. And for the record, Councilmember Farrelletto is on. He just stepped away from his camera temporarily. Thank you all and thank you to the public. We apologize for the late start. We had severe technical difficulties and we have worked it out. And so we're about to begin our meeting. Just a note before we begin our meeting is that the public hearing has been changed to Monday, May tenth, five P. M. As many people have asked for more time to study the budget and we wanted to be the public servants and do that and move that meeting. And so at the end of this meeting, all of the meetings that are scheduled will be announced and what time. Of course, the public can watch those public or the meetings live via Facebook but can participate in the public meeting on Monday, May tenth. And I believe send in your, if you have any comments on the budget, you can send those in early. I believe we, Council Chief of Staff, are you on? Can you tell the public where they would send those comments, please? Thank you. A motion by the majority leader has moved that the common council will now convene the committee as a whole to begin consideration of the mayor's twenty-one, twenty-two budget proposals. Just as a reminder, today we are hearing from departments. And then next week, council members will take a deeper, will take a deeper dive into the questioning of the departments. The, if there are requests that you have with departments to produce something for next Monday, we'd ask that you would make those requests today. So that when we come Monday, departments can be prepared for the deeper questions. And if in your studying of the budget, you don't, you didn't see a question or didn't know you had a question, please contact that department before Monday and ask them for what you need so that on Monday, when we go into the workshops, we're not spending time asking departments for something that we could have asked for all week and then needing to come back over and over. So that's very important, council members, that we do that so that Monday, we can move through the, so that we could move through the workshops and get accurate answers to what we are asking. First department to come before us today is Buffalo Police Department. And I'm glad to be, we're glad to be joined by Commissioner Estridge. And the Buffalo Police Department is with us. If you'd like to make any opening statements or tell us about your budget or anything that you need.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I have a short little talk for you. I'm pleased to present the mayor's twenty-one, twenty-two recommended budget, a blueprint for prosperity and equity in the city of Buffalo. This plan builds on the foundation of fiscal stability, a continuing economic recovery, and the innovative things employed throughout the city to overcome the challenges posed by the pandemic. We are proud of the administration's steady and smart approach to weathering the impacts of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The city's budget was successful. We realized early on that physical distancing measures put into place to slow the spread of the virus would adversely impact our budget. But we also recognized that the last thing we wanted to do during the economic crisis was to lay off people or increase taxes. We ensured that all our employees were able to keep working to provide critical frontline and emergency services that helped keep our community clean, safe, and our city running. Because of this approach, not one city employee was laid off as a result of the pandemic. Our budget is balanced and many revenue lines are exceeding their expectations. This five-hundred-and-thirty-four-point-five-million-dollar spending plan continues to do all that. It represents an increase of approximately two-point-nine percent from the current year budget. The primary drivers for this growth are higher personnel costs, which include contractual raises, increase of the living wage to fifteen-eighty-four per hour, higher pension costs, as long as the restoration of a deferred cost of living increase for exempt personnel in the administration, common council, and the controller's office, voluntarily except the wage freeze as we prepared to endure the pandemic. This relatively moderate growth, relatively moderate rate of growth is also a reflection of the mayor's commitment to continue fiscally conservative budgeting, which have resulted in historically low interest rate on our bond purchases, continued downtown investment even at the height of the pandemic, and an economic revival that is keeping pace with national trends in areas like values. To help maintain this framework, the recommended budget lowers the residential property rate by one-point-oh-nine percent and increases commercial property rate by two-point-seven-four percent. This increase still keeps the city's commercial property rate extremely competitive. This commercial increase means only forty-six cents for every one-thousand dollars of commercial assessed value. In order to adjust the base proportions for property taxes, in the end, according to the state formula, the mayor felt it was important to ensure relief for homeowners who are still experiencing difficulties, which then led to the slight increase in commercial taxes. We will be willing to work with anyone experiencing hardships due to the pandemic and are holding the line across the board in comparison to other municipalities on both tax rates. Moderate fee increases in certain areas associated with the implementation of a proactive rental inspection and other permits are included in this budget. These fee increases will directly fund residence services and programs, including lead education and remediation programs. This plan maintains investments in infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, parks, and recreation, economic development, public education, public safety, crime and violence intervention, police reform and social reconstruction, cultural institutions, and youth employment and job training. These include funding for our partnership programs with the Buffalo Public Schools, Say Yes to Education, the Peacekeepers, Game Changers, T. A. L., the Police Athletic League, Albright Knox, the Buffalo Zoo, Kleinhand, Buffalo History Museum, Niagara Film Commission, and we reopening two of our outdoor pools. And the mayor has also brought the funding for cultural organizations back to pre-pandemic levels. Additionally funded is provided for the summer reading program and almost two-point-four million dollars for the summer youth internship and employment program, which received an increase this year. Due to the pandemic, not all the prior year slots were utilized and we were able to roll the funds into this current year. The city of Buffalo will provide financial support for two-hundred public school students who will be enrolled in summer school this year to address learning loss during the pandemic. This will help ensure that young people who would otherwise have the opportunity to work this summer are not financially penalized for going to school and catching up to their grade level. Public safety and community policing remains a priority in this year's spending plan. Included in this plan is funding for the implementation of the reforms the mayor introduced last summer. When we balance the need for public safety with the need for better and more training, specialized teams, and resources, we are moving toward a better model of community policing in the city of Buffalo. This budget proposal achieves this by making a moderate reduction in spending in the police department while increasing funding for the implementation of the law enforcement assisted diversion, speed, and increased police officer training. This sensible approach will ensure that the department has their resources necessary to combat crime and violence and keep our residents safe while shifting resources to support programs that strengthen training, education, and community outreach. The recommended budget will continue cost-saving measures initiated during the pandemic, like the city white collar sixty-forty work-from-home program, while also investing in other efficiencies that will enhance our long-term financial status. A small number of additional personnel will ensure, have been added to ensure that we will have the capacity to manage the funding and programs that will be realized through the American Rescue Plan, other forms of aid. We need to be able to accurately evaluate the impact of our federal stimulus, effectively compete for additional federal infrastructure and energy efficiency funding, which will become available in the near future. In addition to these investments and measures, the city's revenues are returning to pre-pandemic levels in certain critical areas, including state aim payments, state aid, and infrastructure aid. While other revenue streams like parking or special offense are not expected to return to pre-pandemic levels as quickly, we will use approximately fifty-three million dollars in federal stimulus funding to replace revenue streams and to restore spending categories that were impacted during the pandemic. The mayor chose not to include revenue lines for school speed zone or bus arm cameras for several reasons. First, there's a pending local legislation which could seriously impact the projections. So to avoid having the control board or rating agencies determine the budget is structurally unsound, we eliminated them as a point of contention in terms of the budget. Second, we have always maintained that the data would show a decrease in these revenues year-to-year because compliance would grow. So we are not comfortable creating a point of contention with these negotiations until the data was properly addressed. This action in no way indicates a change in the mayor's commitment to the program or the overwhelming evidence for the program's effectiveness. Instead, this issue, which should contain, should continue to be debated and discussed outside of the framework of the budget because it is ultimately about public safety, what works and not works, and not about any revenue being generated. The fact that it has been changing behaviors that often lead to tragic, personal, and costly outcomes will continue to demonstrate to the public in a more appropriate form. As a result, none of the departments will address this choice and instead focus on what is currently contained in this budget proposal, other than to highlight what cannot be done due to the removal of this revenue stream. This includes projects or initiatives which could have been accomplished but now cannot without a portion of the revenue stream dedicated to those activities. While the mayor remains focused on ensuring that the vital public works projects that are necessary to ensure overall public safety are completed, we have received no other alternate sources of funding or recommendations from the council in terms of how to pay for them. There is no question that the executive departments will do what needs to be done to keep our children safe. But it also must be noted that the council's approach to throw the baby out with the bathwater is not fiscally sound, does not reflect the overwhelming success of this program in terms of data, and does not in any way reflect the mayor's commitment making our streets safer for children, parents, teachers, crossing guards, and all the pedestrians and motorists. It's simply a debate that is better left outside this budget agreement. An increasing percentage of the population becoming vaccinated, employment rates are rising again, and a reengaged federal government that will support cities and their residents. We can budget and plan for our future with optimism. The mayor's recommended budget for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal year ensures that we will remain on a conservative and sound fiscal track that strengthens communities and neighborhoods, produces a competitive development environment, and promotes inclusive prosperity. At the same time, it sets the stage for a broader set of investments and providing for more relief for businesses, residents, that will be detailed in the coming weeks as the federal government releases the guidelines for the stimulus funding. Thank you very much. We welcome any of your questions.
Ms. Estridge, I'm going to move to police, but I do, is that a statement from you or is that a statement from the mayor?
That is from me. Thank you.
Okay, so let me respectfully say what happens during our budget hearings is not a choice of the administration to say what we can talk about or what can be talked about within the realms of the council's review of the mayor's proposed budget. So I want to be very clear that council members may ask questions concerning the speed cams and if department heads have been instructed. I just want to make sure because in what you just presented, you said that the department, that they will not be able to, they will not discuss those items. Is that correct?
Correct. What would be done? Correct.
Okay.
The outstanding items.
You do understand that this is a function of the council, not of the administration or the council, for the administration. And because you said it's from you, for you to tell us what we can do during these hearings is, I will not adhere to that. We will conduct these hearings as a council function, which is an independent arm of the city of Buffalo. Thank you.
And the departments may not be able to answer. That's what I mean.
Okay, I'm going to say that we'll get to, if we get to those questions and the department heads decide not to, then we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But you're, because you said that came from you and not from the mayor, I'm not sure if you have that authority to tell department heads. If we have direction from the mayor and he gives it to them, that's fine, but it's a disappointment of, point of order. I want to go to police. Okay. So I don't, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on that opening speech because we have hearings, but Councilmember Wyatt, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just, I just have one question, Council President, before we go into this because I'm just, when you look at the budget, I know she, in her comment, talked about using the rescue money from the stimulus. And I just wanted to ask, do we have any documentation of what the details and how we can use it? I mean, I know you're putting it in the budget and you're talking about increasing the number of staffing that, but is that something that you have a document that says that we can use that money for this? Commissioner?
We do not have any guidance. We only have traction from our senators.
Okay, so, I mean, so, so, I mean, here we go again. Last year, we had a sixty-five-billion-dollar hole and now we're saying that fifty million is going to come from this, the federal stimulus, but we don't know if there's guidance that says we can do that. So I know through all the numbers that I've looked at, there's increases in certain areas of staffing. And I'm just trying to understand, how do we do that if there is not guidance at this point? I mean, so right now, we're just kind of assuming. And that's not a good thing as we go through this budget because we have to have it finalized by the twenty-first. So we really need to know where that money is going to come from because if you don't get the fifty million or we can't use it for the things that you're saying, what do you do then? And I know you also have the eleven million in there from the casino.
Yeah, I'm sorry. In the, in the language that was presented, general language when it was presented initially from president, there is language to cover lost revenues. And that is what we are using that right now, our basis.
Okay, well, from our conversations.
And once we spoke in committee yesterday, the official guidelines will be out next week.
I'm just concerned again, as we go through this budget process, you know, there's, we, we, from what you've told us over the last several months, there hasn't been a fifty-million-dollar deficit loss from the city. And I know prior to this, we had these concerns about revenues and they haven't met the expectations of what we put forth. So again, as we go through this process, I'll be keeping close eyes on the revenue sources because at this late date, we have no guidance saying that we can use fifty million dollars from the federal stimulus for our budget. That's it, Council President. Thank you.
All righty, let's move forward, please. Buffalo Police Department is with us. Thank you, Commissioner, for being with us. If you'll just state who's with you for the record and then give your presentation to the council.
I have with me Deputy Police Commissioner Joe Gomaya. I have Deputy Police Commissioner Barbara Lark, and I have Payroll Sarin Askin.
Anything that you want to present to the council concerning your budget lines?
No, I have no opening remarks, no opening statements.
Okay, council members. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you very much. Both perhaps to Donna and to the commissioner. One of the questions I get from the general public that are looking through the budget book are questions regarding where in the budget are increases in terms of fixed costs, contractual costs, and for example, salaries. Those are kind of fixed costs. The mayor stated that there's been a reduction in the police budget by, I believe, a half-million dollars. Are there other lines where we've seen increase because they're fixed costs? Because people look at the budget and they say, no, your budget went up and they're looking at the fixed costs. So can you explain to the general public what are the fixed costs that contractually we're obligated to pay out? Where we've seen increase in those fixed costs?
Yes, as you said, are contractual. Salary lines are certainly fixed. The police department has many. You've had the tasers, you have the body cams. They have computer systems. A lot of those are considered fixed costs. They have to provide the maintenance and service on those and sometimes replacement of parts. But other things you have in there. The only increase that we really did in their budget would be, did put a little extra money for vehicles and to then trying to keep up on their vehicle purchases. So we did increase that a bit.
And the pension costs, have they gone up?
Pension costs, it's a combination of police and fire. Yes, it went up tremendously this year.
It went up tremendous.
Almost eight million dollars.
Okay, because they'll look at those costs and they say, hey, the common council raised the police budget when in fact those things that are driving that are outside of our control.
They are, especially all the continuation of the equipment and technical services.
Okay, and the savings, the reduction, can you explain where the reductions are? What are?
Reductions in their supply lines. We reduced some of those. They also have reductions in, with new policemen coming on, they come in at a lower salary to the more experienced. So once we, people retire, we bring in officers at a lower salary rate. And then along with that salary, you also get longer or lower longevity payments, perfect dependents, and all the other contractual.
And you had a reduction in overtime as well?
The police department has been working very hard to reduce their overtime and their court time in this last year. They anticipate that it will continue that way.
So they anticipate a reduction both court time and overtime? Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner, this question's for you. I'm looking at the work program on page one-seventy-six. Let me know when you have it, please. A second. Page one-seventy-six.
Yep, got it.
I'm looking at the two thousand nineteen actials in terms of arrests. You had twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-seven. Actual, I suppose that's your today, you have five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-five. So that's a huge reduction over eleven, over almost eleven thousand less arrests. But yet you estimate fifteen thousand arrests for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. I'm just trying to understand, there's such a gap there and especially when we're talking about the lead program, the diversion program where pre-arrests, where officers use discretion and they won't be arresting people. How do you, how do you estimate fifteen thousand?
Well, we went down to the five thousand because the pandemic and the court was closed. And as of right now, starting this month, the courts are beginning to open back up and a lot of cases will be heard in the courts.
So you didn't make that many arrests because of the pandemic and the courts were down? Is that it or?
The court arrests was down during the pandemic. There wasn't, we, wasn't a lot of arrests made during that year and the courts wasn't, wasn't open. A lot of arrests we made was, the rest, some of the rest that we made was appearance tickets and some of those just didn't get to the courts right away.
Okay.
Councilman Rivera, the, one of the other things, pre-pandemic, we were averaging roughly thirty-seven to forty arrests a day. When the pandemic went in, starting last March, our arrest average, which we were tracking daily, our average wound up going down to roughly ten to twelve to fourteen arrests a day. Those arrests that you were seeing were higher felonies or domestic mandatory arrests. You saw a lot less of those street encounters. You know, obviously with the, with the fear of the pandemic, we had a lot less of those, those street encounters, some of the lower-level drug arrests and, and things of that nature, larcenies, things like that. So our arrest average has significantly decreased throughout the last year. You know, and I, I think what you're also seeing is, you know, some of that, some of that discretion and trying to find other ways to handle issues, you know, whether it be, you know, diversionary services or things of that nature. But you definitely saw a lot less street encounters and that also takes into account traffic summonses went down significantly because a lot less traffic stops were occurring again during the pandemic. And then last summer, we had, you know, a lot of the protest activity which diverted a lot of our services to try to, you know, keep tabs on that. So, but that's a lot of the reasoning. We, we track these things daily and you see our average arrest down significantly and it's reducing our, our overall average over the last several years.
Okay, as a result of fewer arrests, was there a savings to the city in terms of court time? Because you didn't have to go to court in overtime?
Yeah, there was a significant decrease in the court time, a significant. Courts were closed. Nobody was going to court. The only, you had for, for several months, there was no grand jury, no felony hearings being run. The governor's order put a stop to those timetables. When the grand jury opened up briefly for last summer, some officers were being brought in for conferences just prior to going into the grand jury. But those violation misdemeanor arrests, they still haven't been dealt with. There's going to be a significant backlog by the courts to handle those. If they handle those through immediate plea bargains, then it's not going to include bringing our officers in. So, you know, you may see some court time pick back up again when the courts open up very soon. But yes, that's, that's a significant reduction in court time was the fact that courts were closed.
And a question regarding lead. Now that we're going to implement lead, will there be savings in court time and overtime as well?
Well, the whole purpose of that is to try to avoid an arrest, as we all know. So there wouldn't be court time with that. You know, not, it's going to be a limited amount of cases that would, that would qualify for a lead diversion. So you, you know, you still have to look at your, your higher felonies, your violent crime, your domestics and things of that nature obviously are not going to be something that qualifies for lead. But your, your low, very lower level drug offenses and your larcenies, if the complainant is willing to be a participant in allowing that person to be diverted, then that's where you would see those. But, you know, I would caution you, you know, don't look for some, you know, significantly large number of diversions, we, they have to qualify for it.
Okay, and my, my next question is, I'm looking at nine-one-one calls for police service, the very last one on page one-seventy-six. We had two-hundred-and-ten-thousand calls to nine-eleven. This year, we went up to two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-five calls for service. That's probably an area that affects the general public the most because when they call nine-eleven, whether it's an emergency or quality of life call, they want their calls answered in a timely manner. The response time to nine-eleven calls, has that improved?
You know, the, the response time is, it's, you have to look at from the time that the nine-eleven call comes in and, and when it's sent to our dispatchers, which they are two separate entities. Nine-eleven call takers, our county employees, they send those cars, calls to our, our dispatchers, our city employees. And then you have to look at the time that it's dispatched. So the time from dispatch to the car, you know, which could be a, you know, a tough number to look at is from the time that call is actually dispatched to the police car, to when they respond, you know, and I caution Um, you know, and I caution again on that number, it may look like there's a longer um on-scene time. The officers aren't always, you know, whether they're hitting the on-scene or calling on-scene, it depends on what that call is. Sometimes they just have to jump into action and address the call. So it's not a true narrative of, of when was that off officer actually on scene? Uh, we'll have to look at the response times, uh, a little deeper dive into uh their dispatch time. But, you know, the officers are getting to calls when they're actually dispatched them. They just may not always hit that on-scene button. The priority is to address the call, not to hit that button. We certainly stress that they do get on scene, but their priority is to actually address the call. They may not call on scene for a couple of minutes after being there when they're already at the call.
So they won't call on scene, although they're on, on scene?
Sometimes they do, it depends on the situation, of radio traffic, sometimes they can't always get on the radio. Sometimes it's a stressful call and they just got to jump into action and uh, and, and, you know, it's actually calling themselves on scene or hitting the button on the computer that says they're on scene would come secondary to addressing the call, so it's.
So they can actually hit a button, they don't necessarily have to get on the radio, they can hit a button and it shows that they're on scene?
That, that is correct.
Okay, well, that's probably something that they should adhere to, so we can gauge what the response time is between the time the dispatcher puts it out and they arrive on scene, because we, I, I, that is probably most of um, uh, as far as block clubs and people that have called saying that we've waited um, or it's a quality of life call. And I, I expressed to them that I certainly understand that, you know, some calls are prioritized based on the levels, whether they're level three, level one, level two, with however you categorize them, from, you know, the highest to the lowest. Um, but I, I, it's hard for me to track and say, look, I really can't tell you why it took them longer to respond. It could have been that they're answering other priority calls, I'm not sure. But to be able to go back and determine, you know, why it took so long for the police to get there. Um, certainly, I'm concerned about the response time to nine eleven calls based on the information I get from the block clubs and people that call our office. So that's something we can look at and try to improve upon in terms of that reporting, making sure we have an idea of what the response time is per call. You can, whether they're emergency calls, whether they're quality of lifetime, you can categorize them. You can say, well, this is the response time for quality of life call, this is a response time for emergency calls. But at least you have an idea how much time it takes uh for the police officers to arrive to the scene, because every call that they make is important to them. It could be a parking and somebody blocking their driveway and they can't get to work. For them, it's an emergency. Um, so if we can dig down on that, uh, on the response time and be able to keep some kind of stats, because that's important to us as well. We always talk about stats, that's an important stat, because uh, you know, the people depend on nine eleven. Thank you very much, uh.
Councilmember also too with the um calls to, um, sometimes it can be where a district may be tied up um with something, you know, very serious in that district. And we may have to have another district come over to answer those calls, why that district is tied up with um the, whatever that emergency is they're calling that district.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Council President.
Uh, Councilmember Rivera, are you asking for any data for the workshops or no?
Well, I mean, they, I mean, based on what Deputy Commissioner just mentioned, they really don't have, it doesn't seem like they have complete data, because some police officers don't hit a button when they would get to a scene of a, of, of call. So it's hard to know exactly what, how long it took them. But the police department should at some point make it mandatory, you get to a scene, you hit that, because we need to have that data. I mean, the accurate data, um, exactly how long it took them to get to the scene and answer the client. What did, and then after that, what's the disposition of the call? Because you get to a call, you want to know, okay, what was the disposition? I'm sure they've logged the disposition of the calls once they get there, whether it's a crime report, whether it's an arrest or whatever. But um, yeah, if, if you have that data, please provide it, I know it may not be accurate. Um, but at least it gives us an idea when we talk to our block clubs, why is it that, you know, the, it takes a little longer in certain instances for police officers to arrive to their call?
Thank you, any other council member? Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, uh, Council President, and I would also like to just say thank you to uh, the commissioners of the Buffalo Police Department for being so responsive uh with my concerns that they took seriously when I made those inquiries uh over the last few days. Um, we, we did discuss uh overtime, you know, because overtime is substantial. Uh, we've discussed the court time situation, which has to do a lot with the pandemic and uh perfect attendance incentives. I believe that was a direct reflection of the pandemic as well. So an information that I've received from them, I'm just asking uh budgetarily if they could just provide that information to this council during the workshops, because I'm pretty sure that's probably going to come up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, have, have you already given that list, Councilmember Wingo?
Yes, they already have, yes, sir, yes, sir, they already have the list uh between the overtime, the court time and perfect attendance incentive. Uh, they'll have that information next week, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And uh, council members, if it, um, the uh chief of staff, uh, they're compiling a list uh so that when we ask in these um hearings, uh, we will uh all be on the same page and we can make sure that what we are asking for um, that comes to us, any other council member? Councilmember White?
Thank you, Mr. President, this question is for Commissioner Estridge. Um, Commissioner, the reduction that you talked about, that you spoke of in your opening comments, that you had, there was a reduction in the police budget, can you tell what that amount is?
Uh, I believe the overall was seven hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Okay, so that's about, uh, that's about point eight percent reduction? Oh, I swear for a while.
No, 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 continue.
I'm sorry. Um, you, you know, we've, we've had a lot of, of comments from um the advocates and many of them have talked about the funding police and all that stuff. And, you know, I'm not one to say I wanted to fund police, I, I know in my district, they would say they need more police. Um, but the dollars that, the reduction that you utilize, um, which was point eight percent, well, point zero eight, not point eight, it's point zero eight percent, those dollars are going where? I mean, the reduction is going to any, any, any particular program or resource?
Um, we have moved some training programs, the new training programs that we are talking about, the lead program and the bias training are coming through human resources. Will become, those are new programs, but they're going through human resources. Um, we did have some reductions in some of the purchasing of items, but we did have a new item of uh tasers also. That kind of offset any other lower.
Okay, so we, can you give us a detail of what those, how those are be spent? And if there will need to be additional personnel for any of the programs that you're talking about?
Um, um, right now you want, or do you want me to do it?
Oh, for next week, when are we, next week, I'm saying.
Yeah, and there's no additional personnel for that.
Okay, um, the other question is, I know the state AG sent us a letter to the, to the mayor regarding the civilian review board, and she encouraged us to establish one and also talked about the cost or spoke to a cost um in doing an effective civilian review board. And I would trust that those dollars will probably have to come out of the police department. Um, are you, are, is that a conversation, is there any conversation about that whatsoever?
Yes, there's money put aside for our community planning.
Community planning?
Yeah, for the, with the commission, um, keep that detailed. Al- along with the uh commission on citizen rights, community, um, so up there.
So, so I don't know if the mayor had a conversation with you or shared the letter, but the AGs basically said that was insignificant, that, that didn't meet the mustard for what the reform, um, the governor's reform was calling for. Um, so again, my question is, from the dollars that she spoke of or spoke, but in her document, did you see the document from the state AG, let me ask you that question?
Did not, Commissioner, he.
No, I did, I um, I didn't re- receive the letter from them, but I um did uh speak with the mayor about uh, about the letter that his office received.
Okay, and, and I know that his comments recently from the media have been that he's open to it. And I know when I spoke to you, Commissioner, you wouldn't have a problem with having a conversation about it as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, I do have a resolution that's on the council for um the inaction of a civilian review board. Um, I know that we've given, I've sent a letter to Corporation Council to give us some further details on that. And so I want to really push that and just give you, let you know that that's something that I think is important. I think the advocates have talked, spoken very strongly. I think that the AG basically said, and I've heard it this from her and people who are listening on Facebook, no, she didn't speak to me, but I heard her um comments, and she said that the police shouldn't be policing the police. So um, I want to follow up on that, because I think that again, with all that is going on, uh, this is a perfect time for us to put something in place that's real and that can be effective. And this is again, and I want to say it again loud and clear, this is not something to be anti-police. I think my colleague, council member, um, uh, Rivera has said that he would be concerned about it only from the standpoint that we want people who are reasonable and not anti-police. And I totally agree, we wouldn't want a group of people who have any type of biases towards the police department, just like we wouldn't want people who have biases towards the community. Um, we want people who would have a good understand, understanding and willing to be fair in deliberations if there was a case that came before them regarding police misconduct. So I just want to put that on the radar, I know that we didn't um have that passed in the council as of yet. Um, but since the state AG puts forth a powerful um statement regarding it, I would hope that we would take the um onus to make certain it happens, because I believe that's part of the mayor's, the governor's reform um that it's going to be, and I believe that it will probably be part of the federal reform as well. So I want us to get ready for it, because I think the advocates has pushed for it, I think the, we see it happening all throughout the country. Um, Buffalo is the only city, the large city in the state of New York that does not have some component of a civilian review board, which I think is a mistake. But I hope that you'll work with us as far as trying to do something that reasonable and is good for the citizens of the city of Buffalo. That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, sir, uh, Councilmember Freelo?
Thank you, Council President, um, this question is from Commissioner, Commissioner Estridge. Out of the, the total funding for police in the budget, how much of that is for legacy costs like health insurance for retirees and other costs that are fixed that we do not have control over?
Within the um actual police department's budget or the overall department?
Overall.
Or overall, citywide?
Well, actually, if I could just have it for police related, if you have that.
Um, we have, our fringe account is probably, and that fringe covers healthcare, old retired people that work. That, that's kind of rule, everything's rolled into that, and that's approximately thirty percent of our budget annual basis.
Okay.
Our police and fire and, you know, every other union and exempt person is part of that also. I mean, I can break it down further for just the police also.
Yeah, if you could at the, for the workshop, that would be great, just because um, I know last year when we were going through the budget, there was some um, some misinformation now from the administration or any of my colleagues in the council, but I think um, we, we would just like to have specific information relating to those costs. Um, because I would like to be able to say, out of the total amount of funding that's going to police, X amount of dollars are fixed costs that include health insurance for current retirees, these types of things, just so we have all that information. Thank you.
Can I just for police, you know, want it for fire also?
I was just going to ask for police, I don't know if any of my colleagues would like it for other, but that's where, that's where I'm at.
Councilmember Rivera? You're on mute.
I think we can ask uh for the breakdown. It doesn't have to be either or, I'd like the breakdown from individual departments, and if you want to do a breakdown for each department, that's fine as well.
Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, uh, Council President, uh, again, uh, I would just like to ask the police department to also provide, because we, we did have a very uh comprehensive discussion. Um, they did also include the information that was found in line item uh four six one zero zero six, where the tasers are. Uh, that I did inquire about the increase, and that's where, that's why that substantial increase is there. Uh, so, you know, for the record, uh, I, I spent several hours with uh the uh executive uh budget team, as well as the comptroller's office, several hours uh speaking with them, working through uh this budget to ensure that we had a very detailed understanding of what is happening. So if you all could just, you know, provide the information on the invoices as well, uh, that's, that's an item from when I was informed. I have four six one zero zero six, and that was a roughly three hundred thousand dollar increase, oh, two hundred and something odd thousand dollars. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, thank you uh to police and uh we look forward to seeing you in the workshops. The next department that is coming before the council will be Buffalo Fire. Uh, we have, uh, good, we have Commissioner. Um, if um, just for the record, state who's here from fire and then any opening statements that you'd like to give.
Commissioner William Ronaldo, uh, good to be here today and uh, oh, excuse me, good to be here today and looking forward to contributing to the conversation, thank you.
All right, uh, council members, any question for fire? Uh, chief, how, how much are we, uh, Commissioner, how much are we looking it up here uh on fuel?
Is it fuel?
Yes, for our apparatus.
Fuel runs through uh inventory in stores, you can get that breakdown, do you want to buy the apparatus, is that what you're looking at?
Um, not by the apparatus, but just uh, uh, department wide. Um, if we could have that for the workshops.
Yep, we can get that for you, thank you.
And, and the reason is, there's discussion about, and, and you might be able to enlighten us about um, you know, the move toward electric vehicles. Is there out there right now, electric vehicles, um, being manufactured for fire departments?
Uh, yes, in fact, they are, uh, they're a little uh cost prohibitive right now, but there are vehicles available. So, yes, uh, we can compare the fuel costs uh and prorate it over the life of the uh, a new apparatus, electric uh vehicles. You know, we can come to determination whether that's a, you know, a way forward for us.
Okay, so we've filed a resolution to ask the city to start to look into it, I won't tie it up in this budget, of course, or, but I just wanted to know uh really for uh the study of electric vehicles and starting to move that way, um, whether that's a discussion that may be being had. So if we can get those numbers of how much we're paying in fuel, it'd be appreciated. So if we can get those numbers of how much we're paying in fuel, it'd be appreciated.
Of course.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Council President. Um I am very pleased to see, even though I know we've been trying to. Uh maintain the line on the budget and not increase spending. I just want to just say that I am very appreciative of the fact that we have the addition. Of the body cams administrator for the uh Buffalo Fire Department. Uh I know that's a uh a forty-five thousand dollar a year job. But the attrition, I believe, allowed us to do that from last year to this year. And uh the budget uh for these, the fire department only went up one personnel as far as administration and communication. So. Just wanted to just state for the record, I appreciate the fact that we have that person to help with accountability. Uh forgot to ask the police department about uh their body cam administrator, but. Um I'm very grateful for that, just to ensure that we have more accountability in our departments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um Commissioner, I noticed that your budget went up. Four point four percent. From the previous adopted budget to this year's budget. Can you speak to that?
Uh yes, of course. Uh as you know, like most departments, we've had uh significant challenges during the uh pandemic. Uh one of those is administrative leave. Uh we've had granted over four hundred fifty administrative leaves to our members. Uh which equated to twenty-nine thousand, two hundred hours of overtime generated because of that administrative leave. Which comes up to, it actually costs our department one point seven million dollars. Over the course of the last uh fiscal year. So uh actually, if you deduct that number from our budget, I think we're, we're well within it. We're doing actually really good and I have to compliment my staff, uh the budget department. You know, everyone involved with making that uh, making that happen because we've, although we've had significant challenges, uh we've been able to overcome them. And still provide uh services to the citizens of Buffalo. So uh also, uh we got a pause in our recruit class uh training. Uh this last fiscal year uh for three months, uh which precluded us from putting uh over forty firefighters. Uh into the height of our summer vacations for twenty twenty. And that cost us a, a significant amount as well. So uh uh those two items alone, uh you know, accounted for most of the uh increase in our budget for uh the twenty twenty fiscal year.
And what was, I mean, the administrative leaves, what, whether they typically, I mean, it's just. Somebody just decided you want, they, they're sick or disabled. What's going on with those?
No, the administrative leave was granted for uh, these are all COVID related. Uh individuals who thought uh were symptomatic and we had policies and procedures in place for that. Uh DUH regulations had us uh uh follow quarantine procedures from anywhere from seven to ten days for uh first responders. So individuals were off for a minimum of forty-eight hours, taking into account our schedule. And uh so like I said, that's where we came up with that twenty-nine thousand, two hundred hours of overtime generated for people who were symptomatic or uh showed symptomatic. Uh symptoms. And we took every precaution and that's what it cost us uh dollar wise. Now, since then, we remedied that. Uh one of the remedies we've had for that is uh rapid testing. We have now have rapid testing capability. If a member uh does think they're symptomatic or displays uh signs and symptoms of the virus. We can do a rapid test and within fifteen or twenty minutes, we know whether uh, uh whether they do, you know, indeed are positive or do have the virus. And our uh administrative leave has, has gone down to almost nothing. We're either at zero or one or two uh pretty much. Every day since then, since we've acquired that rapid testing capability.
Has, has, has there been a requirement to get your firefighters vaccinated?
Uh unfortunately, it's not mandatory. It's not mandatory. Uh so our firefighters are being vaccinated uh on their own time, not on duty. Uh also not mandatory to uh report whether they've been vaccinated or not. Uh I just began a, around the rock spring inspections yesterday. And where I've asked all the firefighters to uh, you know, to do get vaccinated. I don't have a handle on that number. Because once again, it's not mandatory that they report whether they've been vaccinated or not. But let them know that my goal is to have a hundred percent of the department vaccinated.
And, and that's a contractual thing. I mean, I know through HIPAA, you, you can't mandate someone to tell you about their health. Um but is there a process, because I, I think, you know, when you talk about the one point seven million for administrative leave, there's a reason that. To at least have them, if they could volunteer, because again, those are big numbers. That we have to pay out because of someone's exposure and this is something their frontliners. I know that that could be a challenge for them because they're exposed.
Yeah. I, I definitely put that out there. Uh you're protecting yourself. You're not expecting yourself. You're protecting your family. You're protecting your uh fellow firefighters and you're protecting the citizens that you serve. And that's the message that I've been putting out to our firefighters. But once again, at this, at this juncture, uh it's not mandatory. That could change down the road. Uh any county, state mandates that come down, but at this time, it's not mandatory.
Okay. Can you get, and can you provide for the workshop some detail on overtime because um. You know, as I think about what we agreed to regarding the twenty-four hour shifts. Um I'm, I'm a little perplexed by that because I, I, I can understand that if someone calls out. Um someone has to cover for them and from what I understand, that's overtime. That's not. You know, well, you only work three days or you only work two days. That's, that's overtime when they come in, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. Anytime there is a vacancy on the, on the line, that generates overtime. Yes, it does.
Yeah, so if you could give us a detail of the overtime and um what, how it's worked over the last, I believe it's been two years, I believe, that twenty-four hours. Shifts have been planned for us.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I can tell you, I can tell you that the overall trend is downward. Uh once again, uh. We've never, we haven't experienced a perfect storm. My perfect storm is a fully staffed department, which we're very close to being right now. Uh we have a class, a recruit class of fifteen uh in the State Fire Academy and uh scheduled to graduate in June. Just in time to put them in the mix for our, our summer surge, our summer vacations. We're very close, actually will be slightly overstaffed when that class graduates. So uh for this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh we'll have a fully staffed department. Uh obviously, that pandemic is still out there. We're still experiencing uh uh. You know, the pandemic, the effects of the pandemic, uh but there are. Along with the rapid testing and other policies and procedures we have in place that uh administrative leave that has cost us almost two million dollars in overtime. That will go away or that will diminish somewhat. Uh as I said, we're down to like the zero, one or two administrative leave requests uh per week now. So that's significant. So to me, that's a perfect storm for us. We'll experience our first uh fiscal year with a fully staffed department. Uh the pandemic while still there, you know, it does seem to be waning. Of course, uh there could be a second wave and we'll have to prepare for that. But uh I think we're, we're poised uh for success in that area as far as overtime is concerned.
Yeah, yeah. And, and no disrespect to your commissioner. If, if you could provide that to me because I was told before. When we were talking about the negotiations with the twenty-four hours and those things and being fully staffed that. Um those overtime hours will be diminished and you just told me about a one point seven million dollar administrative leave and of course, that was related to COVID. But still, it, every single year when we talk about this, this just always seems like there's something. And so you can have all the staff that you want and need, um but it's still, it seems as though there's still this. This overtime number that continues to grow. And that's a big impact on the city budget. And I know Donna and we've, we talked about this over and over again. Those numbers, those overtime numbers are huge. And I know that part of it is contractual, um but we gotta start looking at how do we address that, you know, in, in the private sector where I. You know, I've made most of my bones in my career. Um and overtime was no, no. And, and I know that again, we have, we have contractual agreements, but if we're fully staffed. You know, I'm trying to understand why is there still these large overtime numbers when we saying we have our complement of workers, firefighters and police. Um that we continue to have these large overtime numbers. And I, and not related to you, but I know the police department is saying they have a backlog of. Um cases that are going to be going to court. So, you know, I'm, I'm in, I'm anticipating we'll probably have some additional overtime numbers there. Because there's this backlog. So again, you know, I, I just think that at some point, we gotta come to an understanding that. The overtime is probably one of the largest um determinants of the, just the budget not being able to. Do all we wanted to do for this, the residents of the city of Buffalo. We know that we need police and fire, absolutely. Um but we gotta control those costs and manage them in a better way because right now I just don't feel comfortable that. What we've agreed to anyway, um is going to be the fixer. I mean, a twenty-four hour, um you know, you call in, somebody comes in and gets twenty-four hours of overtime. I, I just think that's problematic for us.
All right.
Yeah.
But uh all due respect, all due respect, once again, uh. Pandemic year, not to use that, but there are mitigating circumstances. Since my team uh uh. Came in uh almost a year, it's going on three years now, uh we came in with an overtime budget of upwards of ten to twelve million dollars. And we're looking at uh closing out this fiscal year, a little over seven million dollars. So. We're already uh. Roughly five million dollars less than we were uh three years ago in the midst of a pandemic with all the challenges that I outlined previously. But we continue to work uh to lower that.
Okay. Thank, thank you so much, Commissioner. Appreciate you.
Very welcome.
Councilmembers, any other questions for fire? Seeing no other. Thank you, Commissioner.
Council President.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yeah, just to follow up on something that the commissioner was saying, he was talking about his perfect storm with a fully staffed department, things of that nature. Um I know you have the recruit of fif, the class of fifteen recruits in the state academy right now. Um gee, is there money in this year's budget for an additional class? Or do you see another class coming on the following year? And uh the eligible list, when is that good until? You know that.
Uh great question, Councilman. Uh the eligible list, I'll get back to you, but at least we have at least another year on the eligible list. I do plan uh in coordination, cooperation with the budget department and, and HR, to have another class. At the State Fire Academy and I'm glad you brought that up because another way we're saving a significant amount of money is using the New York State uh. Training Academy in Montor Falls versus our own uh training bureau. So uh for example, we're able to fit, we will be able to train fifty firefighters. Uh for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is roughly three thousand dollars uh per firefighter versus seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh using our old training model, uh using the training bureau in Chigawaga. Taking instructors from the field and then having to backfill them and pay them overtime. So this new model is paying dividends, just another way of uh reducing our overtime budget. So but to answer your question, uh Councilman, yes, I would like to uh uh have another class. Uh the number is to be determined, the, the size of the class in February, the start of February of twenty twenty-one. Or twenty-two, two rather, so that they will graduate in time, once again, for the summer surge in June.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none other. Thank you, Commissioner. Look forward to seeing you in the workshops.
Thanks very much.
Next partner to come before us is Commissioner Finn with Public Works, Art, Streets and Water.
Morning, council members.
Good morning, Commissioner. Uh for the.
How are you today?
Good, good. For the record, can you just state who's with you?
Yep, uh I'm Mike Finn, Commissioner of Public Works. I have our deputy commissioner for Parks and Rec, Andy Rab. Uh acting administrator for Public Works, Jackie Barnett. Uh Susan Atridge, the director of refuse and recycling. Nolan Skipper, the city engineer and Francisco Guzman, the deputy commissioner for buildings.
All right. Any opening statements, uh Commissioner?
Yep, uh just very briefly, I, I kind of just wanted to highlight the uh changes in the public works. Uh budget for, for this year. Uh the, the budget is up. Uh about uh four point three million dollars. The, the vast majority of that is personnel costs, like, like every uh department. Uh there were a number of titles that uh due to the pandemic in last year's budget, uh we left. Uh vacant, they were budgeted to be vacant. Uh we are budgeting to restore all of those, which is a. A very good thing for, for our department to get back to, I think, the level of service that we all expect and I believe that our um citizens deserve. Um we've also uh increased funding uh for road repair and road striping. Uh we've included the purchase of three street sweepers. Um two of them will be electric, uh which is uh new for us, but we're. Uh interested to try that, that new technology out as far as our fleet goes and uh see how those work. Uh and then the balance and, and honestly, the, the majority of, of that uh increases. Uh regular wage increases like uh other departments and um Commissioner Estrich has, has discussed, the living wage went up. Uh collective bargaining agreements uh have um increases. Uh as well as some funds that uh were transferred from other departments. Uh so that's the conclusion of my opening statement. I'll, I'll answer any questions or I'll provide any clarifications.
Thank you, Commissioner. How many street sweepers do we have total with the two new ones?
You know the answer, Susan?
We have seven now that are working. Lookable condition.
Yep.
So we're getting pretty.
Okay, so there's, there's seven right now in, in our fleet, so there will be a total of, of ten.
And I, how, how are those scheduled out in, into communities? Is there a schedule like the snowplowing?
Exactly, exactly. There's a, there's a route schedule uh that focuses on. On a, on a very regular basis with our, our main and secondary streets, especially. Uh in the overnight hours in the summer when parking is uh a lot less on those, especially the downtown area. Uh and then within the residential areas, uh we try to mirror that up with the bulk trash pickup. One of the biggest challenges that we have with the street, street sweeping in uh residential. Is the fact that there's parking al- almost all the time and, and i- in the case right now, we're not enforcing parking, so we had to further coordinate that. Uh but that was something that we worked out and gave a good go at uh consistent with the bulk trash pickup.
Because I think one of the greatest concerns is in the residential areas because that's where you see. Obviously, the, the garbage on the curbs and especially at stoplights where. Unfortunately irresponsible adults dump their trash out while they stop at lights and other places. But I do understand the challenge of um if there's parking on both sides because you can't get to the curb. Um my last question is, you said some positions are restored. Uh what positions are those?
Uh so several of them are, and then actually the vast majority of them are um civil service. Uh administrative titles that were just budgeted to be vacant. Uh we were trying to be conservative and. Uh do our part to keep, to, to keep our essential services going. Uh during a very difficult budget that, that was this current fiscal year until we got to the point that um. The federal government's providing stimulus and we can all feel comfortable about getting back to normal. Uh but that, that is the vast majority of, of them.
Thank you. Councilmember Noah Koski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Finn, you stated that there is an increase in striping. How much of an increase in striping will there be?
Uh the increase is two hundred thousand dollars. Uh the account will be raised to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And how are those, do you already have those locations determined for additional striping?
Uh we haven't determined the uh finite locations, uh but what. Uh the, the initial thought process, and we can discuss this in, in more detail a- at the workshops, but the uh initial thought process was to. Uh focus them on uh crosswalks a- as well as uh what I refer to as corridor striping. Um and then certainly be uh balanced all across the city.
So you said that the, the total uh amount will now be two, two, five?
That's correct. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
That, yeah, that, I mean, I'm very happy to see that. That's a, I mean, a huge increase and, and it's very much needed and. It's something that Councilmember Rivera, myself and a lot of others on the council have advocated for. So thank you very much.
Commissioner, um I know that there, um as Commissioner Estrid said, pending uh legislation. Um when it comes to infrastructure at the schools, um if we could have a list for workshops where you plan on. Uh those stripings, because I think that um with the pending legislation, that there may be. A need to ensure that um the areas where uh they are currently speed cams that. Um if the pending legislation um moves through or if new legislation moves through. Uh that we're prepared to stripe those areas for uh student safety.
Yeah, certainly, and and um I think. Either way, with the legislation, from from my perspective, there's a need to strike crosswalks at schools regardless of if there's a camera there or not. Uh so our 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 thought process is to be prioritizing schools. Uh as well, uh as well as other high traffic, high pedestrian traffic areas, uh while we're prioritizing uh the funding for crosswalks.
Um it does the two twenty-five cover that, or is there going to be a need for increased funding um for that? To get the schools done?
Well, I think if you're talking about all of the schools, there there would not be enough funding within that two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh we would look to prioritize uh what is there with. Um I guess prioritize based on uh highest traffic volume, highest need, highest risk factors, whatever, you know. Uh objective criteria we we want to take a look at. Uh but to simply put all of that striping at all, close to a hundred schools that that we have across the city, uh we would need more funding.
So with the um. Uh pending stimulus, uh does it seem as if, and I know everything is a guess on this. But what I keep hearing is infrastructure, infrastructure, does it seem that uh any portion of that money would be able to be used for the schools?
I think it's uh difficult to tell and uh too early for myself to predict until the uh guidance is is put out. Uh one thing that I do want to to mention, uh typically when infrastructure is talked about in in the context of of any kind of of dollars. Uh they look towards capital improvements. And it's generally held that striping is not a capital improvement, because you're talking about a a life cycle of. Uh three to five years depending on the actual traffic volume. And that very rarely meets the criteria of uh typically ten years is what the federal government wants to get out of a capital investment.
So is there anything in the pending legislation as far as the infrastructure? That you think would have at uh that meet that criteria, like signage and and those type of things? Is that not capital improvement?
I I'd have to look more carefully at the at the pending legislation to answer that question.
Okay, can you look at it for our workshops?
Okay.
Alright, thank you, any other council members, Councilmember Wingle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh Mr. President, Council President, I appreciate the. The acknowledgement, uh I would also like to thank the Department of Public Works specifically. And I don't see my colleague Joe Forleto on his camera. But uh when I was speaking with the administration spoke last week regarding the budget. We get over quite a few of the additions and some of the places where the staff had been changed, if you would just give me a moment to kind of scroll through these pages. But the first addition that I would like to personally thank you all for adding is the Coordinator of Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements. Uh we appreciate that, I personally appreciate that. And the fact that when you are paving the streets, you are including the markings for the bike lanes. That is very much appreciated, uh Commissioners. Uh we also looked at, uh we just scroll through these pages, the the other departments and by far. I think the Department of Public Works is one of the largest uh departments outside of the 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 Police Department. In the city with all of the work that they have to do manually, uh you all restored one of the street. Repair workers and I'm looking at how you all balance that out. And that is appreciated, because even with the addition of the Engineering Inspector, uh you all still work that out as well, so I'm appreciative. Of how you use the attrition in some of these areas uh to uh be able to, I even hired a new Principal Engineer. So now we have two of those, uh that is something I know that our Commissioner holds dear as he is an engineer. Uh himself, so we are very appreciative of the the fact that you're able to balance that all out. With this year's budget, considering the pandemic, uh as well as the American Rescue Plan. But it's good to see that we have another supervisor of maintenance uh working in DPW, that's also. Uh wonderful uh to know that someone got that promotion. But again, uh this is a large, large department and I'm and I'm just thankful that uh uh the guys are out working on ferry right now. Uh in the Masson District, are very much appreciative of the work that you have been doing. Uh I am personally appreciative of how responsive uh Mr. Finn, you have been, even on the weekends. When I shoot you a text on a Saturday or Sunday and you respond. Uh I know that when you uh when you got this position uh originally. Uh I know that a lot of us were making the comparison with your predecessor, uh Steve Stepbyak, because he was very, very. Responsive, but it's good to know that you are uh your own Commissioner and you are responsive in your own right, so that. Is appreciated, uh because again, all of the work that you do uh and are responsive to in the Masson District. Uh we are appreciative of, so again, uh I will uh submit any further questions, even though I don't have many other questions, because we had such a. Outpourrent of conversation this past weekend, I appreciate how open you all were to receiving my questions and uh answering those questions. So again, uh thank you and thank you to Council President uh for this acknowledgement, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Wyatt, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. President, um Commissioner, I know I think last year or the year before. We you added a liaison to the council, um can you, did you hire that person as of yet?
The that title was filled, yeah.
Who's that person?
Uh the 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 person's name is uh Max Medwin. During during the course of of the pandemic, as uh our department and really all departments. Uh we're working short-handed, a number of people were doing things that that we needed to do to get through the. To get through the pandemic and. Uh I think going forward, we we can have conversations about how we want to reframe. Uh our communications process. And um improve that, uh because I think that's that's something that uh that that I'm certainly interested in and and committed to. Uh and 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 I think um you know, having that conversation with with all of us, I can. Uh make that work, because I I certainly don't want to uh take away from. You know, how how we've been operating for for a number of years where uh we have an open relationship with um council members and our our addressing. And helping to work with issues that that come up with the community, uh the Public Works is a a very diverse department, it covers. Uh a a whole host of of items all all across the city and and there there's no shortage of things to talk about.
Um yeah, because I I think that we we all would like, you know, I appreciate engaging you and your staff, I mean, I have no issues with. Um the folks that, you know, we contact with regarding CDVG or any type of print plans. Um but I just wanted to make sure that we utilize that person, because I think that person would be more concert and more influential on what we're trying to accomplish, and I know. We talked briefly about the sco- speed zone cameras and the process. Um the non punitive measures that we're looking to put in place. And I know you um talked about the increase in budget as far as individuals. Um but I think that, you know, having those, some of those dollars, at least for the twenty cameras that we have in place. Um to put those non punitive factor uh um things in place would be hugely helpful as far as as well as the striping. And some of the digital out uh readouts that we ask for um regarding speed, because if we were talking about safety and that's been something that. We've heard from the administration about safety, um and then we talk about striping and the striping is not for a large number. We're focusing on schools but not all schools, I think that sends a mixed message and hopes that, so I hope that we can talk further in detail about that. During the workshops. Um the the other thing I wanted to talk about as far as um. You know, there's been a big issue as far as uh litter. And again, we're talking about increasing staffing, but I know that there was a time. When I was just an ordinary resident, that there was a person um in the university district that actually had a sweeper. And he, they they went, I don't, I'm not going to discriminate, I believe it was a man, but he would go up and down the street and do cleanup type things. Um and I think that improves the quality of life, I think that a a many people within the city has talked about our city. Um could be a little cleaner, I'm not going to say our city is dirty, but it could be a little cleaner, is there any thought of thoughts about bringing those people back on on staff?
I'm I'm not specifically fair uh. Which uh person you're 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 referring to, I I certainly um I'll I'll consult with Hunter Jackson, who may have a a recollection of. Uh how that went, but one thing I I can add, one of the very uh important titles that we. Um put in this current budget, but kept it unfunded again, trying to be conservative and deal with the pandemic, was the Director of Infrastructure and Quality of Life. Um and that that title uh will oversee from a a management perspective, the the Mayor's Impact Team. Uh among other parts of of our um operations. And that's the title that I'm looking at that would address items like that, it's right in the title, quality of life and. Obviously, a a clean city is is part of that, so I think be- between that. Uh as well as our our increased efforts to uh purchase more street sweepers. Uh that are that are just continuing to um run run those routes and pick up what's what's in the street. I I think we can make an improved effort towards that.
Right, I mean, because I think again, you know, we've had a number of public um meetings. Committee cut committee uh committee meetings in which people have talked about the cleanliness of the city and my head is taken off of volunteers. Um who commit to doing that, I know every year I do two cleanups with volunteers. Um in partnering with the other districts and Councilmember Bowman has been a part of it for a couple of years. Um but we've we've gotten people involved, because I I agree, I don't think the city can do it all. Um but we should all try to do our share, um we're going to be doing the university district wide cleanup on the fifteenth and I ask people if you can't come and help. Clean up on Bailey or under thirty-three, just clean up on your own own street. But I think that when we do those things and we also show a model of what we're trying to do collectively. Um it can be a huge factor, um when we talk about increasing our budget and you have people who may be inside the building. Um but not people outside the building, especially when there's things that the community is called for. I think that's that's the right strategy when we can do that, and so I hope I'm hopeful that we can find some dollars for that type of person, I know the. Street sweeper you talked about, people complained to me, when does the street sweeper come around? I didn't know the the mathematics behind it or the process, um but you said it's only, you said it's only during big trip bulk trash pickup?
On on the residential streets, that's the general uh schedule that that we follow, on on a main street, uh they are regularly running. But it's on third shift, so that's that's where, you know, I I don't see it, because we're all mostly sleeping.
Yeah. Well, well, I I know the Judges Road area, they they complement it, and so I want to thank you for that, but I do know. They do have a problem with the cars, that's actually, you know, they have to go around them and, you know, we don't want any claims on somebody's car getting hit, but um. If we could have a plan to really kind of, so people can see it, I mean, because again, people, like you said, when it's late at night. You know, that may be the ideal time, but when people see it, then they know what's happening and that there's not a question. Because I do see in a lot of areas where the drains are clogged, and so when there's a heavy rain, there's a huge flood, like on Lisbon and Orleans. After a huge rain, there's a huge flood and it's because of the debris, and so I don't know, you know, this if the street sweeper is only coming during bulk trash. And that's what, twice in the in each district a year, then we're being, we're missing it. Uh that may be another conversation that we can have during the workshops as well.
Yeah, I think it's a a good conversation to have in the workshops.
Okay, so if you can, so my one request, just so council staff knows, is like, you know, what the plan is. For dealing with the um speed humps that we requested, I know we talked and I thank you, um and I'm looking forward to the pilot program happening. Um it's been a long time coming, and I think it's going to be a huge help um to the district and to the to the city. Um as opposed to putting up cameras and ticketing people with that, um speed humps, I believe, can be very effective. Um and and I know that we talked a little bit about how the money that we've put for our individual budgets. Uh capital budgets will be utilized, so we can talk a little bit more about that during um the budget hearings, I appreciate it, thank you Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, uh Councilmember Wingle?
Thank you, Council President, uh Commissioner Finn, could you just please give us that cost uh for the. I know you, I know you gave it to me, but can you give it to us again, the cost for the, uh because I I do think that speed humps are very effective. And I do think that they deter people from speeding, uh but the cost per speed hump for the permanent and the temporary. Speed humps, I know that permanent ones are are is more, a lot more involved, there is also a cost. My staff and I were talking about this just uh yesterday about the temporary speed humps, what is the cost for those?
I I'd like to follow up with you on that at the the workshops, I I think the numbers I have in my head are a little outdated, we did just recently. Uh put out new bids and got new prices, so I want to make sure I give you the most up-to-date information.
Uh that is completely fair, I appreciate that, thank you, that's all I have, additions that I needed, thank you.
Thank you, uh 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 Councilmember Rivera. You're on mute, sir.
This along the lines of Council President um regarding being proactive with regards to speed zones. And the eventuality that the cameras are pulled out, I agree, we need to do some striping and we also need to have a contingent budget. For additional striping, if we can find money in some places, I think that'll be uh one place I'd like to put money. The other is, if we do pull the cameras out, is uh the data that comes from the camera. My understanding is we can get that data from speed readers. Um I believe that we should put up the speed readers in those school districts as well, so we can catalog. How effective the infrastructure that we're putting in is, because we really want to know how it's working at the very end of all this. We want to know if people are continuing to to slow down or they're being conditioned. Um are they being conditioned to slow down or they're speeding, we want to know that information, we don't just want to walk away from this and not. I'd be concerned about our kids' safety, so I I believe that the speed data is very important and we can do that through the speed readers. I believe any infrastructure, whether they're technology, whether they're physical, we need to use them in the school district. Because that is our concern, we continue to be concerned for the children, and I think we have to use street calming infrastructure. Um and it needs to be a priority, so I would like a contingency for speed readers. And striping, additional funding for those two things, I think is very important, because we're truly concerned about the kids, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioner, in this year's budget, uh how much do we have in safe streets? Or this or the slow, sorry, the slow streets uh program?
The the neighborhood slow streets program uh that. I I talked with some of the council members on it, I believe our our meeting is uh on on Thursday, Councilmember Noakowski. Uh that's uh funded through the capital budget.
Okay.
Uh there's no funds for that out of the general fund budget.
Okay.
Is that it, Councilmember? Commissioner Finn, in the past, um one of the things that's been important to the council, and we had a position. With the Coordinator of Infrastructure and Repair, which basically was supposed to be someone uh who followed up on a. For lack of a better term, pothole program and making sure uh that when uh street cuts were made, that they were filled back in. Did we ever hire that person, or did you ever hire that person?
Uh I evolved that title into Director of Infrastructure and Quality of Life, uh which is vacant, but I intend to fill that.
So that went from, so that's going to be the the ninety thousand dollar uh position?
Yeah, yeah, with with more with more responsibility, certainly.
So this person will have a staff or they will be the ones out on the street?
Uh both.
Okay, so we we and I'm I'm I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I'm seeing more and more. Street cuts happening that are not properly repaired, um and so uh.
Um, and so um though, as you know, and just so that the public understands when like a plumber comes, cuts the street, replaces the pipe, does puts the concrete in the winter and then never comes back in the summer to put blacktop and even that out. Um, it is the responsibility of the plumber or whoever did the work, correct?
Yes, the the plumber is required to guarantee their restoration for two years.
And do we have someone right now that follows up on that? Because I'm tearing my car up on these street cuts. And they're not potholes like that were made from, they're perfectly cut. Um, and is there anybody following up on that?
Uh, we do have e- engineering inspectors uh that do follow up on that. Uh, and I that's something I I'd like to uh uh improve upon. The one of the titles was one of the things that we left vacant this year, so I I want to fill that and get uh as many people out and eyes on the street as possible.
So is there like a program, and I mean software or anything, that once there is a permit pulled, we know that there's going to be a street cut that we that they have to then report back, that they have repaired that instead of trying to chase um the the plumber around and i- is there any way where um they can be required to come back to the city um that they have uh fully repaired that street?
I believe we could track that through Hanson. Uh, Hanson, or I think it's been upgraded to oh, yeah, uh, the the newest version, Hanson eleven. Uh, that's the permit system that uh you primarily hear from the Department of Permits and Inspections, but uh Public Works uses that as well uh when we issue permits. And through that
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Han- Hanson, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, and similar to how the Department of of Permits and Inspections, I'm I'm sure has described to you before how they have a workflow for the different types of work that they have to do, um Public Works can have that as well.
Okay, so we're writing a a resolution right now that would ask, and I'm glad you added that Public Works, it was really just coming to Public Works, but you're you're totally right. If they could work with inspections, that way we don't have to have staff or the community, uh and many in the community don't know, you know, that their plumber has to come back out and repair it. Someone mentioned to me uh this week, part of our and that this is for permits and inspection, so I can save this, but you might know the answer. Part of the fee that they pay is supposed to be for the repair of the street and I I didn't think that that was.
Uh, that I can look further into.
Okay, and I can ask permits, but I think that those, we we're just seeing more and more um of these street cuts. The utilities, when they cut into our streets, because I'm seeing them cutting the brand new paved streets. And then they're doing, I've seen the same thing. So do we have the same jurisdiction over utility as we do a local plumber?
Not totally, uh especially some of the older utilities like uh National Fuel, National Grid, uh have some I'll call it cover from the state um Public Service Commission, where there are limitations to what a local municipality can uh govern them or force them to do. Um, but that that in no way means that they're allowed to just do whatever they want either. Uh, so that's that's a a continuing, ongoing conversation, especially with the cutting into brand new streets that that drives me insane. Uh, we tell them, we have a meeting every year in March where we say, these are the streets we're going to pave this year. Are you doing any work on these? Because we'll hold them for a year or maybe not even, maybe just a couple of months. We slide our schedule back on that street. Utility company goes in, does their thing, we come in over and everyone's happy. Uh, that doesn't always work, so.
And I know it drives you crazy because we've talked about it. Um, is there a penalty if the private contractors, the plumbers or whoever cuts into the street, does not come back and repair that street? Is there any type of penalty?
I believe so, but I I'd have to look at that further.
And can you bring that for the workshops?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Commissioner, just to 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 talk about recycling and the enterprise fund. Um, where are we with that? Uh, I mean, I know we've been having a surplus over the last couple of years since we increased the user fee. Is that surplus, I mean, is that amount increasing or decreasing as far as the cost?
Um, so end of the year, we're anticipating a balanced budget again. There might be a minor surplus, but not a a lot. Um, we also, for next year, we have included some additional funds because we did not have an N R E M sale this year. So some of the properties, when they get caught up to date on their um user fee, we get uh payments for that. You'll see a little bit of an increase uh in uh next year's budget.
Okay, so so I know this past year, we supposed to, at three million, it was a surplus of three million, am I correct? In the user fee?
In the current year?
From the previous year? Uh, you you said you transferred the money from at the end of the year into what, the assigned balance or fund balance from the enterprise fund?
This is their obligation in our fund balance, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, you're correct. I believe it was around three million.
Okay, and then you're saying this coming year is going to be less than that?
I do not believe there's going to be um as large a surplus as last year.
Okay, why is that?
Um, I think, does it speak to any of that? You know, we had
I can I can speak to it in 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 general. Um, costs are going up every year with garbage. Um, and we are expecting uh an uh an increase with um recycling uh going into, I think, next year. Uh, our current vendor
January.
Uh, is up on January first. And uh the the current contract uh says that um the vendor gets the um the recyclables and is able to market them to help defer their costs. Uh, if you've been following the the markets for recyclables, it's significantly changed since this contract started. When this contract started, it was uh very lucrative uh to sell recyclables, plastics, paper, everything. Uh, that's totally changed since then and uh we're we're uh foreseeing that the city is going to have to absorb some of that going into uh future budgets.
Okay. And it's that's significant. I mean, because over the last, what, two, three years, we've had a significant surplus and now we're saying we're not going to have anything. Um, what what amount are we looking to reallocate if it's going to be a, so are we saying it's going to be a deficit this year?
No.
And is that?
Close to a balance, but maybe a small surplus.
Okay. Um, Commissioner, on page three forty, it says the the transfers out, it's like six hundred seventy-three thousand. What's that?
That's a transfer from the user fee to the general city fund.
Okay.
To the city also, our transfers.
Okay. Okay. So our so our efforts to recycle are doing what for us? I mean, it it seems as though, you know, we're we're at another crossroads. And I know we've been pushing recycling. Um, is is it helping us at all?
Well, I think certainly from from an environmental standpoint and uh compliance with the law, uh state law, that that's, yeah, state law, that um uh recycling is a a benefit. And I I also think it's it's important to to keep in mind that uh this situation with the uh value of recyclables may not last forever. It may flip. It's it it's a commodity. So uh I don't think that it's uh a good thing for the city to think about reducing what it recycles or or changing its program and moving back from the success that that we've gained. Uh, at a at a minimum, we're diverting waste from a landfill, which is a good thing for everyone.
Yeah, and and I'm not definitely not saying that, Commissioner. I I totally agree with you. Um, we got to continue to do what we can to save our planet. Um, is this, because this is, I I believe I saw something on Sixty Minutes where China was not accepting our recyclables. Is that kind of an issue?
Um, my recollection is a number of years ago, what when that happened, that's what flipped the market uh for recyclables, was that that demand went down and therefore uh the price goes down as well.
Okay. Um, can we have some details for this during the workshop, um Commissioner? We talk a little bit more about what the impacts are going to be, because um I don't want us to wait until we have a, we're having millions of dollars come out of our city budget um to cover this, when we may need to start preparing now what we may have to do in the future to make sure the enterprise fund is self um sufficient.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other council member? Not. Thank you very much, Commissioner, and we look forward to seeing you in the workshops. Uh, up next is Department of Human Resources. All right, we are set. Commissioner, if you just state who's uh state your name and who's with you for the record.
Okay, good morning. Thank you for having us. Antoinette Palmer, who is the Director of Compensation and Benefits. Willie McLaughlin, who is the Acting Director of
Uh, state your name and
I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Did you hear what I said, though?
Yes, we heard it twice.
Antoinette and Willie, okay, twice.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner, any uh open a statement, anything you wanted to tell us about the budget?
Yes, please. The Department of Human Resources has worked hard to continue to provide services to the city's employees as well as the citizens of Buffalo, while containing overtime with no loss of services. We feel the human resource budget is fiscally sensible, given we are adhering to the mayor's recommended plan, which reduces carbon emissions while consistently responding to the daily needs of the city departments and the public. Throughout the pandemic, much of the work has been electronically transmitted to department heads, city employees, and the public. This has proven to be most effective. As we move into the next fiscal year, the Division of Civil Service is anxiously anxiously anticipating the initiation of the applicant tracking portal, which is known as NeoGov, which will greatly enhance our onboarding process as well as our eligible list management. This portal will allow employee, uh departments, employees, and candidates to upload their own information and track the progress of their paperwork. Adhering to our proposed budget will still allow us to serve service departmental needs for adequate staffing in accordance with CBA agreements, civil service testing, and recruitment. Currently, we are in the process of holding some of the exams, which were postponed from last year. Although this has been much different than what has been done in the past, we have successfully held the exams in a clean and safe environment, following all COVID protocols. The Division of Civil Service is also in the process of administering police and fire promotional examinations, which entails pursuing an aggressive timeline to ensure that the tests are conducted in a timely and efficient manner. The Division of Personnel is preparing to optimize professional training. I cannot say enough about the staff in Human Resources. They have done an excellent job in the performance of their duties during what is now our new normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, and welcome back. Glad to see you are well. Um, we I have, um, I'm really excited about the new platform regarding the employment system. Um, I'm just ecstatic. And um I know um Darryl presented and we had the vendor on and they talked about this platform and how it's going to make it much easier for your department and not have the reams of paper and files. Um, so I'm really happy for you all in that you'll be able to focus on the 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 real essence of what you do in the training and those other things. So congratulations. And I hope I had a little hand in that, Commissioner.
He had a little hand in, remember his presentation?
Oh, you had more than a hand in it, but thank you. Discussion proved to be, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, but the discussions obviously proved to be um most enlightening and obviously we we followed through. Uh, it it just, it was helpful. Thank you so much.
And and if you could, and you you don't have to, I'm just saying, I think the college would love to hear something like that, that their program was hel- uh helpful in a small way. I mean, you know, they was looking for some type of thing to say, hey, we did something. But I think that if you could do that, that would be hugely helpful, because um I know that they're trying to make their their program relevant for Western New York. And um I think it was helpful for me and hopefully helpful for the city. Um, it's, I I know when I was chair of Civil Service, we had a number of hearings regarding um individuals who had issues regarding this this police exam or the fire exam. Um, are those nu- are those numbers going up or are those numbers, have they not been existent?
And when we say those numbers, what what do you mean?
Number of complaints or the number of appeals?
Appeals have gone on, as they did in the past. Uh, I would say that complaints have not escalated, that the appeal process, I think we are, we we took a broader look after um revisiting how we were doing business. And I do feel that it has been beneficial to both the candidate as well as to the city.
And and I think that, again, with the new SIS platform, I think that's going to help in a lot of ways as far as the communication with the candidates and knowing what you what you need and so that, you know, that's not an issue, because um we know we had a lot of folks who said they never got the letter, they never got this. So having that platform will help alleviate a lot of that.
It it will give a a sense of um uh of control as well. I think the candidates often felt as though they had no control. And as you said, for various reasons, some being that they didn't receive the information, but now they can take their, uh, you know, their 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 future in hand, really.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I I think that's all I have. Um, thank you again, and I look forward to your new platform and how it turns out to help those citizens, especially the police and fire. Um, I know I hear all the time that these are individuals who that's what they've wanted to do all their life. And so I hope it's a better way for them to communicate and make sure that they're on the right path to become that policeman and fireman. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner, uh Councilmember Wingo.
Uh, again, it it, uh, thank you, uh, Council President. It is very, very good to see you all uh sitting in the room today, uh Gigi and your staff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your responsiveness. I know we've reached out to your office and every time we've reached out, you've been very helpful. Uh, Damon has been communicating very well. And thank you for your information and insight on the budget. Uh, we really appreciate everything that you've done. And again, your responsiveness uh is is just incredible. Don't parallel. Thank you very much. And I am so glad to see you uh sitting there. So, so very wonderful, I appreciate it.
So much. And well, I I share I share that same sentiment. I appreciate your help and and your office. I thank you so much. All of the council members have been helpful.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yeah, yeah. Um, Commissioner, can you just give us an uh um some numbers as far as the appeals? Yeah, yeah, um Commissioner, can you just give us an uh um some numbers as far as the appeals? I know you're not giving us names or anything, but just um it can you tell us the incidence of what the issues have been over the last year?
I can't give you numbers, but I can get back to you about that, but I can tell you what they they have been. Mostly, they've been over residence and some have been over their backgrounds.
Okay.
So it's difficult to prove as far back, uh you know, as they have to go sometimes and oftentimes a class is given pretty short notice, so it's uh difficult for us as it is for the candidate to gather the information that they need in a timely basis. Generally, we have very sharp deadlines and I think that's a part of the problem, so as we move forward, the more time we have, the better it will make a candidate feel.
Okay, so because you have a, is it an upcoming fire class or upcoming police class?
A police class is going to begin in August.
August, okay. And that it will that that be virtual or is that going to be? How how is that going to be done?
When you say virtual, what, the paperwork?
Well, the the class, is it is it actual, where they taking the exam or is it? You're trying to get them ready for this part?
They will be going into the academy.
Ah, got you, okay.
That will be in person, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, no problem.
Okay.
All right, bye bye.
All right, is there anyone else? Any other council member? Alrighty, thank you. Then we'll see you in the workshops.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next department to come before this body is law.
Yeah, oh my gosh, it feels great. What's wrong with you?
All right, thank you very much. I see uh Corporation Counsel. Are you ready to go, Corporation Counsel?
Yes, um I am joined by my laptop, my desktop, and my phone, which is how we operate these days. Um our budget contains two programs that I think are important um within the Bureau of Administrative Adjudication as part of the get the lead out initiative and taking over residential inspections for lead paint and sponsoring abatement programs. There's a director position and a deputy director of healthy homes position within the Bureau of Administrative Adjudication together with legal support because the situation that's emerged with housing court is there's a backlog of cases, there's an expense on the front end particularly for smaller landlords where they hire counsel and they end up spending some of the money they could spend to fix whatever the the problem is on the lawyer and then the judge says, okay, you have thirty days to fix it and they sit there and say, well, I just spent the money I could have fixed it with on counsel. So we wanted to give a civil route for people to um get cited for cases, but then have a, I don't want to call him a prosecutor, that's where you say deputy director of healthy homes and healthy housing who can line them up with the resources because right now the federal funds for abating lead and ensuring healthy and livable homes is incredible. It's unlike anything we've ever seen and it's a question, and I know Council President can appreciate this with respect to Bureau. Like, if you go into court and you say, well, I gotta fix these things, you'd want somebody there saying, well, there's funds available to have that fixed and I'm going to send you to those funds so that you can actually abate the condition. I'm not going to force you to have counsel in front of me. I'm going to give you sixty, ninety days or whatever you need because when you're accessing those funds, there's a bureaucratic structure involved there and then I'm going to dismiss your case on the back end because the lead is abated, everybody's safe and no children are getting lead poisoning and, you know, the one unit you might own as rental income because that's what a lot of these cases are. It's the small time landlord lives upstairs, rents out downstairs, can't figure out how to get the resources together to make the property as safe as it should be and then if you get written for housing court, you end up spending money on a lawyer instead of fixing it. Well, we have literally millions of dollars sitting up on the ninth floor specifically for these reasons. So the idea, and it's really Anna Falikoff who's taken the lead on getting the lead out. Um it's to properly staff that with really thoughtful people so that they can deal with those issues in a non punitive way. It pays for itself because you have the fees with respects to permits that are increased because we're doing the rental registry and the interior inspection and you have cities rise grant money that offsets the cost and you're probably going to have an uptick in revenue with respects to the punitive function because you will get cases and there are people who say, well, I have the money, but I'm not going to spend the money because I'm trying to suck all of the value out of this property and get as much out of it as I can. I'm not going to put anything back in. That group does need to be punitive, but first stop BAA, then you go to housing court and then you can tell the judge why it's okay when you have millions of dollars to have people living in squalor and continuing to collect rent from them and then evicting them inappropriately and then he can deal with whether or not you go to jail because that's what housing court really should be. Um as opposed to having people come in and say, I don't know what to do. You're telling me I have to come into court and I could face a fifteen days in jail for every uh violation. I'm going to call an attorney. Well, you spent two thousand dollars that you don't have. And then somebody says, oh, well, fix the property now. You got thirty days. That doesn't really work and we know that that doesn't work in uh in practice. And the other initiative uh is a late breaking one because as a result of the pandemic, we've kind of had um an influx of litigation all coming at once because of the toll on the statute of limitations. So there are two attorney positions that have been added because this program I call the keep the defibrillator on the wall program because my litigators and my labor team said, we can't sustain this. Like, we need help. We need something to to break this because we're, we've got too much coming in, too much to handle and we don't have the resources to handle it. And I take the blame for that because as you know, I led the charge to drive down outside counsel. So now you don't have outside counsel, you ask more of people and I'm glad they came to me and said, at some point, I'm going to have to walk here because this is too much. This is like twenty-four seven and my work product is suffering. So I said, all right, well, I'll put it in the budget. Ask the council if we can have additional resources on those fronts because this year with the eight months of tolling, we're just going to get slammed. We're getting slammed every day. We get a lawsuit that's, that would have been filed, you know, six, seven months ago now because of the the statute of limitations changing and it just keeps coming nonstop. And the last position is the, this is the conversation with Council President Pridgen com- um position because I was sitting at this very desk and Council President came in for a pension meeting and I said, listen, my assistant got another job and he's, she's going to come back, work a couple hours a week, hourly basis, continue to do the things that I that we need done and this is going to work. And he said, Tim, the only, and the way that only he can say it, Tim, hire an assistant. Hire an assistant. So I find out on the back end of things that that was um probably the best advice I could have gotten because now I'm trying to manage no fault, manage the mail, manage the phone and manage all these things and she doesn't even come in for the two hours anymore. She got another job on top of that, so she's out of the equation. And now here I am with my laptop, my desktop, my telephone and all these things going on. And I've noticed that I'm less effective because of the workload and trying to manage it all. And I'm just thinking, when he says it like that, when he says, Tim, you gotta listen to the Council President. So that's what's in the in the budget. Um there are increased revenues projected because as I told the council and it might not necessarily show up in the Law Department budget, but the budget overall. Uh we had strategically changed our focus to collections activities. So we've identified a bunch of property damage claims that we're pursuing right now. And I mean, there's in excess of a million dollars out there. It's just a matter of going through the process of collecting it. Um so we do have resources coming in that are above and beyond what we would normally have that would pay for any additions and then so. And that's all I have in terms of my three programs.
Well, listen to the Council President being the most important.
I've thoroughly enjoyed your presentation as many who are on uh camera uh seem to have. So let me say a few things before I defer to my colleagues. Um first of all, I think it's an incredible program uh to help the people in the city of Buffalo and especially when you're talking about like lead and those things that affect our children forever. Um this is probably, and I'm really glad to hear this. Um I I I know that citizens will be just overjoyed to hear, let's get people help. Um and you are right about housing court and how many things are tied up in the pandemic. Definitely did not help that, so um thank you uh for your innovation, administration, whoever uh came up with with this, if you came up with it as a team. This is probably one, one of the most important uh initiatives for health uh and safety that I've seen uh in my ten years on this council. Uh so thank you for that and thank you. Uh I I personally, I have no problem uh with uh you adding what needs to be added uh to your staff. You have worked with a bare bones, and this is my personal opinion, a bare bones staff and your staff has been very effective even uh with not having as much outside counsel as we saw in years where it was just millions of dollars in outside counsel. But I would also say to you personally, in such you said, when I said um when I walked in and and you, how does the the head attorney for this city not have a staff that that does all of the the mail and the phones and you were handling it? But that's because uh and I, yeah, I'll say it because I'm always that same person. God has given you this wonderful ability uh to multitask, but I'm glad to hear that because our law department is so important uh in representing uh the city of Buffalo. So I just want to say personally, uh thank you, Corporation Counsel uh for trying, not only trying to do it all, doing it all, because we were, you were still going to court. We were still um handling the cases that needed to be handled. But I think your staff will will thank you also uh for getting the necessary help uh because your department is too important to this city. Council members?
But can I just make one um admission to you, Council President?
Of course you can.
Because of the pandemic and I didn't have an opportunity to get trained on the defibrillator, I wouldn't even know what to do with it. So somebody's going to go down in the hall and they're going to be like, well, he's got the defibrillator, so you know, he'll bring me back to life. I'll put it on somebody's forehead and the wall. What are you doing? Maybe that'll scare him back into into living, but I don't know where to put the paddles.
If if we have to meet, I'm not coming to your office. Let let's meet down at Gigi's office or somewhere where they know how to use it.
Yeah, we we just have to have somebody there that knows. So bring Tiana with you and then you're good. We both are.
I'm too old to be meeting with you and you don't know how to use the defibrillator. Uh Council members, Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Council President. Tim, you're hilarious. I haven't seen you as much in Wegmans.
Well, you can't go in there anymore. Stand there.
Well, then they don't have the uh, you can't get chicken wings and things like that. They're not, you gotta get it into plastic and all that stuff, so. Um I know you mentioned about the collections efforts. Um and I know that I've been asking for a number of years about the final accounts receivable and every time I'm told about the accounts receivable, which is a large number, I'm told is in law. Are we any closer to having um a report that we can purge those old things because I know there's stuff from back in nineteen ninety or something? Um because most of those things we can have for how long? I mean, the accounts receivable to the city.
Ten years is the outside limit. Um in most cases, it might be a little less than that depending on what the actual charge is for. But you'd be talking ten years if it was something where the city took on the cost and was trying to seek recovery like your cleaning seals and cutting the grass and that type of stuff.
Okay, so you're saying from your efforts, you were looking at a million dollars bringing that back to the city. Um do you know what our outstandings are currently?
Right now, I've identified um personally like one point five million dollars based on really conservative estimates and this is on damage to city property as a result of automobiles hitting a tree, hitting a building, hitting a pole um and taking kind of the itemized cost of those things on the low end and recovering from insurance companies. Most of these things are single car accidents. There's not a whole lot of dispute as to who's at fault because you were driving the car that was moving and the fire hydrant was minding its own business. So you've got that aspect of it where you just have to set up a claims number with the insurance company and go through the process. But they're also kind of paid to have it take a long time. So you identify it and you pursue it and you stay on it and you end up with a good recovery, but it just takes some time. And you know, one of the other things that an assistant can do and would do and hopefully will do is take those accident reports and actually go through them and find the where there is city property damage. There's a box on the MV one oh four that you're supposed to check, but we should have a training for the police officers too because you usually have to read the narrative to find out that you hit a tree or you took out a sign and the box isn't checked. But that person can go through and scour those things in real time and see where you have a legitimate recovery with a legitimate source of funds here being the insurance company because we live in a state where you have to have motor vehicle insurance and a reliable source of recovery. A lot of the things that you're talking about that are housed in collections down in treasury, these are people who are dead, LLCs that have, you know, gone the way of God knows what and have moved on to other places. You're sending mail and dunning notices to people who haven't lived there in five years if they lived there at all because a lot of them are trying to avoid being found. So those things are far more speculative. Where you can say, oh, there's twenty million dollars out there. Well, twenty million dollars on paper, but it's it's going to cost you twenty-five to get it, so probably five million in the hole.
Okay, so I so I'll take that aspect to Commissioner, but the ones, the things that you're talking about, that would be, would that, would that be on the out accounts receivable? Or is that in another area? Is that just in your shop?
It shows up as damages to property in Public Works for Infrastructure, uh police for police vehicles that are involved in motor vehicle accidents, fire for, you know, fire trucks that get hit by cars, that type of stuff.
Okay, I did see that information, okay.
And you do have another component that goes to water because they maintain the fire hydrants. People hit those all the time.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm glad you got an assistant and you can be a little bit more efficient. Your assistant get a lot of that uh paper pushing out of the way and you can kind of manage things, so thank you.
I don't want to throw shade on Siri because she's been a dutiful assistant, so I do have that.
Councilmember Delo, man.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um I have some questions uh for Mr. Ball. Um and I just want some clarification. I know that we're looking at adding an attorney um for the council this year. Um but I want to know, Tim, off the uh right off the top is what are the actual duties that the Corporation Councils uh that the lawyer from Corporation Council does for the city's common council and um what by charter? Well, what what are the duties that actually our lawyer does for us right off the bat? And I have more follow up questions.
Well, there's two aspects to it. The first aspect is approval as to form. So all uh local laws and ordinances need to be approved as to form, but that particular section of the charter says that you can either ask Corporation Council to draft and approve as to form or just approve as to form. So I'm imagining that an in-house attorney would prepare the draft documents, go to Corporation Council to get approval as to form so that you're not starting from scratch all the time. Um our office, and this probably goes back to my time of covering the council, would do a lot of that. Um and you know, it's more efficient to have it done in-house and then pass up a draft than it is to say, okay, here's what I'm thinking and then start from start from point A and go all the way through the process, particularly. And then start from, start from point A and go all the way through the process, particularly if you're dealing with nine different council members that want to sponsor things all the time. And the second, the second aspect of it is upon the request of the council. The corporation council opines on the duties and powers of the council. You don't have to ask, but if you do, we have to answer.
What uh, what else do we rely on corporation council for? Um, I know that in the past, uh, I think I'd been sued once or twice um because of issues that were brought in front of the council. Um, you know, that goes to corporation council. Uh, I had, I was very pleased with the uh defense that I had in uh, I can't remember if it was one or two cases now, or if it was one very long drawn out one. Um, but uh, you know, who would be re- uh responsible for that?
Well, outside of the process of things that come through the council. There's the responsibility of the corporation council and the corporation council's office. To prosecute and defend all actions against the city of Buffalo. So if an official action is taken and then someone sues it, read here Article 78th because that's what happens. We have to mount the defense for the decision or the action of the city. What ended up happening when I was counsel to the council. I noticed before I was counsel to the council that whoever was counsel to the council would um, you know, advise the council however. And then an Article 78 would be brought and they pass it down the hall, usually to me to litigate it. And I said, well, wait, you have to have some skin in the game on your legal advice. You can't be like, oh, well, whatever happens over here, that's fine. No, you give the legal advice, you go through the process and then when the Article 78 comes, you handle it. Because now you're gonna say, well, I'm not going into court and getting embarrassed over anything, I'm gonna get it right. So that's what happened, but the downside of that is that it creates, you know, a lot of work. And that's where Karen has to re, has had to rely on Jessica Lazarine to assist on the Article 78 front. Because people challenge everything now. It's just like, everything's a lawsuit, it's a litigious society, so.
So if, if the council had their own lawyer, who would be responsible then to defend us? Would it be our lawyer or would it be the corporation council's lawyer?
I'd still have the responsibility as corporation council, my office, to prosecute and defend all actions. So you would have a lawyer that's teeing up legislative things and, you know, giving you advice. Cause you don't have to ask us about the process in terms of, here's how you do it. So you have that person available to do those things so that everything doesn't turn into, I used to call it when I was in the chair, ask the lawyer. And as you know, council member Galumbek, when you would come over to the chair and say, did I just really screw things up for you? And be like, eh, we'll be okay. Or council uh president Pridgen, it would be like, I'm sitting there on TV and then, okay, it's like, it turns into jeopardy at some point. What section are you referring to? Um, uh, that's 1, 175, A6. And as council president Pridgen can attest to, carrying around this binder with me and he's like, why are you carrying around that binder? I actually take, take um pride in the fact that me carrying around that binder has resulted in the council upgrading its technology. Like, we gotta have this stuff online so this idiot's not over here with pages flying all over the place trying to figure out the answer.
Okay, um, yeah, these are, I think there's some more questions that ultimately uh are going to be asked. Um, you know, I'm sort of ambivalent uh on the request for the council to have a lawyer. I know that in the past, um, my compromise was, was to have uh the chief of staff or one of the staff members uh be an actual attorney. And that would not necessarily act as the uh corporation council does for this council. But would be on staff and I remember it was Mr. Wolf and uh Mr. Lindner uh in the past. I think those were the two that we had and we use them whenever we had concerns. Um, they helped us to write things uh and whatnot. Um, but uh at the same time, you know, it seemed like uh, and, and one of the concerns I have is, is that, you know, there's not going to be enough actual work. To have an attorney full-time, you know, on the council, but an attorney that is doing, you know, multiple uh, uh jobs, if you will. Like once again, when Mr. Lindner and Mr. Wolf, I believe they were both chiefs of staff at one point. Um, and you know, maybe 10% of what they did was legal work and 90% was uh doing work for the council and for us as individuals. Um, so, um, you know, and I have other questions then that break down, you know, uh, uh, you know, we say that we want an attorney. Um, because we need to have somebody independent from the administration. I understand that line of reasoning, um, but let's imagine that the council was split by a five to four or a six to three ratio. Um, and you know, does that mean that we need two attorneys, one for the majority and one for the minority? Um, if we ever get a, an elected representative that is a member of, for the sake of argument, the Republican Party. Um, do we end up hiring an attorney because uh, you know, to follow the logic that we're following? Um, you know, the attorney that's represented by the administration um is not as independent allegedly. Um, as somebody that we would hire. So if there is a Republican, do we have to hire a second attorney? Um, if there's a split on the council, once, you know, five, four, six, three, should there be two attorneys? Um, you know, I'm, I'm just uncomfortable with it. I understand the arguments for the position, um, but I am uncomfortable with it. I think that the best way to go forward would be if a position becomes available in the um, uh, uh, among the uh council staff. That we would actually hire someone whose duties would be more than just being an attorney. Because I don't think that they would end up doing the amount of work that um corporation council does for the council. I don't think that Karen Gordon or Daryl McPherson or uh Tim Ball or Dave State spent 100% of their time. Working on council issues, council legal issues. Um, and I don't think an attorney would either. And I think that they should be hired to be chief of staff or deputy chief of staff. And have a law degree so that they could assist us on the legal matters. Um, but I, I just have a lot of questions about us hiring our own attorney. Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Ball for answering those questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, before I go to council member uh Fearletto, um, uh corporate council, there, there was a question that, that uh my colleague, we, we can get it answered. Um, because I don't think we would need, and you told me if I'm wrong, two attorneys, because attorney uh would interpret. Uh, but not necessarily have to take a side if there, because right now we have one um corporation council, which if there's a split, we don't go out and get a new attorney. So I don't know what the difference would be if the council had its own attorney. Um, of whether they have to pick a side. That doesn't happen now and we've had very controversial issues before us. Uh, number one, number two is uh that the, the amount of work, I think that all we have to do is look at the legislative agenda. Uh, and, and we see how much work that needs to occur, uh, because there are items there since 2017. Um, and the councils of past may not have been as active in legislation and laws and amendments and, and taking care of those type of things. But I believe that when you are the second largest city in the state of New York and that you are the legislative body. It would be almost like being the controller and not having an accountant. Um, and at the end of the day, um, it is before us, it is in the budget for this year. Um, there was a compromise last year uh that if someone left that there would, that we would fill it. Um, we still, we have only had one person leave council staff. And if the discussion is that we need to cut another person from council staff, um, I'm not willing to talk, do that. Um, personally, but I'm only one person. I think that the legislative branch of the city of Buffalo, New York, when we have items and laws. And as we just heard from corporation council, um, and I quote, it's more efficient to have it done in-house and then sent to corporation council. So I, I'm on the side even uh without the argument of uh, well, this person is independent. The word was it's more efficient. And when you are the legislative body, um, I believe there should be someone there to do more than just to say, hey, I'm, I'm in the middle of doing a resolution. But I'll stop to advise you on this. It needs to be somebody who can dig deep, who can ensure that the laws that we're writing or amending or changing or de, or deleting. That we are doing it to the best interest of the people uh of, in the city of, of Buffalo. Uh, council member Fearletto was next.
Thanks, I just had a couple of questions for uh corporation council, Tim Ball.
Hey, uh, council member, I don't want to cut you off, but I saw you in the park this morning and I was saluting you. And then you gave me this like side eye look like, what the hell's that guy doing?
I was on, I was on mile six and it was still 7:30 in the morning. I was a little tired when I waved.
I was waiting for you to say, at ease, and then everybody starts looking at me like, what is this guy doing?
Uh, that's great. Um, so in your opinion, if the council does get their own attorney, would it be your opinion that if the council is sued, that person should then represent the city?
No, because the charter says that corporation council has to prosecute and defend all actions. And when you get to, I mean, it becomes a bright line distinction because there's all the stuff that happens. And then there's official actions that are actually fodder for an Article 78. So there can be debates, arguments, all these other things, but until it gets to the point of an official action, which then corporation council has to defend. I mean, it's clear, there, there's no ambiguity in the charter on, on that point.
Okay, and then, um, I think this is a fair statement. The majority, at least that I've seen of lawsuits against the city. Not the maj, I shouldn't say the majority, but anything with policy or things related, I think a lot. I think that as far as I know, in the last like five or six years, I think the council has only been sued a few times. I know one, when the council voted to, to make the designate gate circle a blighted area. I think another one was not taking action on an item landmark. And then I think another item was um councilman Franzak did not want a bar to be open till four. And we got sued and lost on that fairly quickly. Is, are lawsuits against the council, like how often are they? Like I'm thinking on average, probably every couple of years, or is it more than that that I'm not thinking of?
You're talking, um, I think high-profile lawsuits. The council is named as a party in these Article 78th every day. Because you have the council, you have the planning board, you have seeker review, you have somebody saying, you should have done this, but you didn't do that. You didn't do your 239M over to the county, your process is frail. So you're talking lump in everybody, but it falls under the category of city of Buffalo and we take up the, the whole thing. And a lot of times we'll actually say, well, remove that from the caption because you're suing the city as a municipal corporation and the official action. Not a specific branch or body within the city. Um, but it happens a lot. I mean, you have, you know, you have the attorneys that throw everybody on the caption and then you have people in the know who are like, well, at the end of the day, it's the city. So I'm not gonna engage in the redundancy of putting, you know, 30 parties in there. But then you have council, council member Galumbek's point of sometimes they target council members and name them. And then it turns into a strange situation where, you know, you have to essentially advance all of these defenses specifically on behalf of a specific council.
Okay, so I think that's very helpful. Um, so I think it's pretty clear, at least to me, that if we do have, um, if we do have an attorney for the council. They would be advising the council, drafting for the council, researching for the council. However, it would not be a litigation job because they wouldn't be defending the city in any capacity. So I think, I appreciate your insight on that, thank you.
And I would just say on that point in terms of, right now, the assistant corporation council assigned to the council does a lot of additional things in terms of motions and all these things that are done after the meeting. That, I mean, could be done by something else. We've taken it over because, you know, we were an austere city for a long period of time. I used to handwrite them, like try to write it clear so everybody could understand it while I was on the floor. Because I'd need fresh exactly what the motion was. I'd sit down there for like 90 minutes after the meeting, writing these things out and Chris and Laura would be like, can you write faster? I'm like, well, not clearly, the official record. Oh.
Um, and then, and then just following that, do you think, um, do you think the city with a lot of the, there's a lot of development going on? And I know there's a lot of litigation regarding development. Do you think it would benefit corporation council to have an attorney that just did land use law? Or is it, um, do you think everything's all set and you don't need any other attorneys um in that area?
There was a time when I would have said that we need that expertise and Brendan Mahaffey would probably say that we still do. But we've come a long way on the land use side of the equation in terms of having staff to those boards, the planning board, zoning board of appeals, et cetera. That do that type of work to make sure that the process is sound. So you don't have the assistant corporation council being the end-all and be-all. It's more of, okay, let me go to Nadine Marrero to figure out what happened in the planning board. And if all the ducks are in the row, it makes it a lot easier to represent any type of a challenge on the back end of that. Um, so I think the advances that we've made in terms of having professional staff have lessened the need for that. But Brendan will come in and say, oh man, you guys slow everything down and we need, we need 50 attorneys to do that. And maybe, maybe he's right, but I don't think we can afford that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, council member Wingo.
All right, thank you, uh, council president, and thank you to corporation council, uh, Tim Ball for all of your explanations. Um, that, that was very informative and we thank you for your clarity and for your animated expectation of everything that you said uh today. I, I really appreciate that. Uh, this is not a boring meeting today because of your presence here, thank you very much. All right, let me just address a couple of things. One is the elephant in the room, and that is the fact that you were uh hired by the mayor and appointed by the mayor, but yet approved by this council, correct?
Correct unanimously.
Unanimously approved by the council. Uh, unfortunately, there has been some insinuation that uh you do not uh provide unbiased and impartial uh advice to this council.
That's been the insinuation?
That's been the insinuation. Can you please explain to this body and everyone watching how that is not the case and that you are the actual council for the city of Buffalo, regardless of what department it's for?
Well, I mean, the, the basic premise of a city as a municipal corporation is you represent the CEO, you represent the CFO, you represent the board of directors. But ultimately, what you're defending is the action of the municipal corporation at the end of the day, when you're in a litigation posture. Um, I can tell you from having sat in that chair and holding the council near and dear to my heart. Although it was some of the hardest years of my life, it was some of the most fulfilling, that the only thing you care about when you're in that chair. Is getting the right answer because you're going to end up in court defending that. And the worst feeling in the world is going into court knowing that you're gonna get embarrassed because you got it wrong. So you have this thing that follows you around where you're not, you're not gonna go in and be like, oh, well, I'm just gonna mail it in and lose in court, no big deal. Cause that follows you forever as an attorney. Like, all right, the body that I'm giving advice to did something that a court said, no, you shouldn't have done it. That's a reflection of me. And in our legal community, and Buffalo is a small one, if you go down the road of, you know, losing all the time or giving bad advice or anything else. That haunts you, because what do you do when you go out and you talk to anybody else in the legal community? They look up your name, they get all the cases and they come back and they say, ah, you, you're the guy that lost this, lost that, lost the other thing. So there can't be an issue of like, oh, well, I'm gonna call it this way or that way because this is how I feel. He's gotta be right.
So that, that's very clear then you could.
Best way I can explain it, sorry.
But no, no, that's a very, very, very clear explanation and I appreciate that explanation, quite frankly. Because uh to say that uh, I mean, you know, to insinuate and which was insinuated earlier, uh, that uh, you know. If we get our own attorney, I think it was said by council member Galumbek, if there was a Republican uh, 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 council member on the council and we all disagree. So should the Republican council member at that point have his own attorney to represent his views? so should the Republican council member at that point have his own attorney to represent his views? And uh yesterday, just yesterday, I uh basically intimated on the fact that, on the idea that uh when you hire an attorney, you hire that attorney to protect your interests. And Corporation Council has been commissioned to protect the interests of the City of Buffalo. It doesn't matter if the mayor does it or if the council does it or the comptroller does it. You are here to defend us and prosecute on behalf of us in court, and that is the case. Uh, so so just like the same Corporation Council would represent both Republicans and Democrats on this council, they'd be able to represent both the mayor's office and the common council, the same same principle.
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, it's just representing or defending official city action.
Okay, so our.
If it goes through the process and there's an official action, then you defend.
Absolutely. Now, this council, I I don't, I don't know why we keep using this term so loosely. Uh, but uh the council president put in a a a position in our budget for uh Legislative Policy Advisor. That position has a requirement that we voted on in common council, uh in common council to amend our rules to ensure that this person had a JD. So this person is not necessarily an attorney who will defend us in court, but this person is just a person who has a JD. So the reason why we keep using this term attorney so loosely is beyond me, but this person is a Legislative Policy Advisor. The next thing is, you're hiring two new municipal attorneys. These attorneys are only making sixty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. We are looking to pay our attorney, who can't even represent us in court, ninety-seven thousand dollars, ninety-six point eight uh thousand dollars, ninety-six a thousand eight hundred dollars. And for to to me, if this person can't even represent us in court and draft uh official legislation where they would have the idle opinion on it, then why do you feel like you should only pay your municipal attorneys sixty-nine and we're paying ours ninety-seven?
It's obviously not my decision in terms of compensation, but the only thing that strikes me about that is when I was sitting in the chair and fielding all the questions, I was like woefully underpaid. So I feel like I have a claim. Just saying.
Absolutely. Look, look, hey, you are the, you are the Corporation Council for the City of Buffalo. That is absolutely fair. Now, um, that being said, I just want to make sure that it's very, very clear uh that uh the Corporation Council that is assigned to our council is completely and a person of integrity and a person who I who I can trust. And if in the future, uh, we should decide to uh hire a person who is an attorney to be the chief of staff, then we should do that. But right now, uh, how would you, how how would this person or who this person who's an attorney report to someone who is not an attorney? Is that even a dynamic, a situation that we need to be concerned with? Because they're not under your umbrella, but they are an attorney with the JD. And if they're gonna be working in a legal capacity, should they be uh supervised by someone who is an attorney? Or how does that dynamic work? Because we've not yet discussed in this common council, the dynamics of this job, the job description of this job, how we're gonna hire the person for this job, the merits of this job, uh, other than the JD credential, we've not really discussed it. So I'm asking you, how will that impact the dynamic in the uh central staff since that's where this person is going to be hired underneath the chief of staff?
Well, you have a, you have a couple of things going on there. I can't remember the distinction between attorney and counselor at law at the moment, but JD, you have one or the other. And then when you actually get admitted to the bar, you're an attorney and counselor at law because you can practice in the courts of whatever jurisdiction. So you can have somebody who's operating as a policy advisor, doesn't have a law license, but has a law degree and brings all that to the to the table and it doesn't have this function of, well, you need a a supervisory attorney over somebody who's just starting out doing X, Y, or Z. But I view it more as that person is essentially operating as kind of an independent attorney in terms of giving counsel, but not making a decision on what an official action is or defending that action. So probably don't need a supervising attorney because it's just conversation. It's not like, okay, this is the end-all and be-all and can be challenged. This is somebody who says, hey, my reading of this is that X, Y, and Z works. And then you go to the Assistant Corporation Council and, you know, some obscurity from wherever probably comes up because that's how municipal law works. And it's like, well, did you consider the, did you consider the uh the Municipal Trade Act of eighteen forty-six? And then you end up calling Alan Gerstman and saying, were you around for that?
So, all right, I I I appreciate the candor. Listen, uh, lastly, um, la- lastly, uh, if there is a disagreement on this council, uh, I just want to make sure that it's perfectly clear for myself and for my colleagues that Karen Gordon is the council for this common council and that whatever her opinion is on whatever there is, whatever interpretation or whatever piece or part of the city charter is, that would be considered the official opinion of of the City of Buffalo because she is Assistant Corporation Council. And clearly, if she works for you, she has the confidence that uh from you that she would give us to correct uh interpretation.
Well, and you you gotta remember one thing, with respect to powers and duties of the council in terms of internal operations, if you ask, we have an obligation to answer, but you you don't have an obligation to ask. I mean, I had that conversation with Mickey Kearns once. He's like, what's your opinion on this? And I said, not yours. And he was like, well, I'm not asking then because you don't want to be on the record saying this and then something else. So it's true, it's just hard to defend. So it's like, don't ask. And we'll defend whatever is done to the best of our ability and that's that.
All right, so just 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 if we if we do ask though, right? If the question is asked, uh, that means the official position of the city on this particular law is given by Karen Gordon because she's uh signed to us and not any person who we hire with a JD or who may be an attorney in this Legislative Policy Advisor position.
Well, her opinion on that issue is her opinion. And it becomes difficult for the opinion to be defended if it's not her opinion because Exhibit A is, well, this was your opinion. So, so you you're going in saying, well, yeah, this is what I thought. But there's this other thing over here which which is where it went. So how do you, how do you navigate that in fairness to a person? And I mean, in in those cases, you probably peel off and have somebody else handle it. But you have like Exhibit A coming back as, well, you said this.
So my my, okay, so let me just amend my question and re-ask it a different way. Is her opinion the same as the, if she was to give us an interpretation of uh an ordinance, is that the same as her giving us an opinion?
I mean, well, I mean, you you're kind of getting into semantics here, but let's say that the ordinance is in front of her for approval as to form. He's got to make that determination as to whether or not it's consistent with everything, right? If you're asking about the powers and duties of the common council, he has an obligation to respond with her honest, candid opinion. And that's the, that's the extent of her obligation in that regard.
All right. And but at the end of the day, this council still has the the autonomy, so to speak, in this regard to do whatever we want to do, whether we take her advice or not. So it's not up to, it's not up to this council to take her advice. It's up to Karen to give the advice. It's basically what you're saying, right?
Karen has the obligation to give you her honest and candid opinion if requested because the charter says so. The council does not have to listen to that opinion. But I just say, having sat in that chair, if you are giving an opinion and then you're asked to go into court because somebody challenges the action and you have to argue that your opinion was wrong, that is a tough argument to make.
I hear you. And thank you, uh, uh, Co- Corporation Council Tim Ball, and thank you, Council President, uh, Darius Bridgen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Corporation, uh, Council Tim Ball. I do want to go on record that Karen Gordon uh serves the city honorably and the council. And that, you know, from what your remarks were, were really refreshing. I mean, I heard that, you know, that a policy advisor would be, you know, efficient, have no conflict and could be a liaison between the government or the legislative body and Corporation Council. And I just want to, you know, state for the record is, we're not recreating the wheel because the Erie County Legislature and their caucus has multiple attorneys and they also have county attorneys who handle that side, just like um Corporation Council does for the city. Um, but we're missing the piece in having someone that can advise us legally. Um, you know, who that candidate would be, we don't know, but we do have that place in the budget. And we did, I did sponsor a resolution that did pass unanimously, um, that we would fill the position by um, uh, you know, satisfying from other positions through um attrition. And we're almost two-thirds there, but just because we put that budget line in there, ninety-seven thousand, doesn't necessarily mean that we would hire someone. Um, at that level, we could commiserate uh, you know, based on experience. And um, I think that, you know, the county will be um a leading uh helpful factor in uh showing the council on how we can do this and achieve this. But I mean, I'm partnered with an attorney, so I have to hear stuff like this all the time. I get lawyered on a on a daily basis. I like to tell people. But you are, you know, as lawyers, you're sworn to uh give your clients the best advice to your knowledge of the law, but not to what your client is trying to achieve. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, it it takes on a different role if you're in like the cr- criminal defense arena and, you know, your clients moving bodies around or something, it gets a little dicey, but yeah, anytime that you're asked, you have a duty of candor to whoever's asking.
Thank you. And as the chair claims, if you have one, we're here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Noakowski. And I know your partner is an attorney and you get lawyered and my partner is not an attorney and she lawyers me every day. Um, but I uh, so just this quick question, um, and then we'll, we'll move on if none of my colleagues. Uh, because a, an attorney gives an opinion, that doesn't mean that one hundred percent of the time is the correct opinion. Would you agree with that? It's their opinion, but it doesn't mean it's the correct interpretation of law.
Yeah, it's an opinion.
Yep. All right. Anything else before we move on, colleagues? Count, uh, I was about to call you councilman.
I just add one thing. For residents of the Fillmore District, well, there's two things, actually. Residents of the Fillmore District, your council member is Mitchell P. Noakowski. Not Dave Franzak and not Rich Noakowski. Mitchell P. Noakowski. That's an inside joke with Mitch. And to Councilmember Wyatt, if you get the funding for the person picking up the trash, I go out there with my picker and my bucket and everybody looks at me sideways. I want one of those vests where everybody knows I'm doing this as my job because I want to keep the city clean. If that gets funded, sign me up because that life is far less stress. That's all I have.
Glad you're getting rest. You should, you should have got that secretary of law or that person a long time ago. Thank you, uh, Corporation Council. We appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good day.
Uh, before we move on, I know that we have been going at this. It's now one o'clock. I want to defer to my colleagues. Would you like to stop for an hour and come back for the rest? Uh, but I do want to finish this today and not have this go into another day. Um, so uh, Councilmember, uh, we do have, oh, we have someone in. So do you want to hear this next department, which is Community Services? And then uh break for at least a forty-five minute uh kind of lunch? Yeah, that'll, okay.
They've been waiting.
Yeah, yeah, just one sec. I I want to get the colleagues and then uh, so what I said we would do was that we would do Community Services who is waiting and then we would break for lunch. So let me hear from the council persons. Yes, Noakowski?
Absolutely. I think that's really appropriate. I don't want to keep anybody waiting.
All right. All right. So uh, just the notification that we will uh do the mayor and executive branch uh after we break uh for a forty-five minute uh lunch, but we will hear Community Services at this time. Um, and so who is with us on Community Services?
Commissioner Otis T. Barker Senior, I'm I'm joined by Deputy Commissioner Nicole Dry and Executive Director Demone Smith. And also on the line should be Sue Lamedu. Yes, I see that she is on the line. Um, I just uh my, from my opening statement, you know, we are the Human Services uh arm of government. And uh, we work every day to uh serve the needs of the uh people in the City of Buffalo. Uh, within this division, we have Contract Administration, Senior Services, Disabled Parking, Youth Services, Recreation and Programming, Workforce Development. And we manage an operating budget of about four, I was just a little bit over four million dollars with a staff of about thirty-six members. And I just want to take the time out to uh applaud the work of our uh staff because we have a small staff. Yet we do a lot of work throughout the community every single day of the week. And uh throughout the pandemic, uh, you know, Sue Lamedu and her team really stepped up uh to uh address the needs of the homeless as well as uh seniors and youth. Uh, Demone Smith and his team have been doing an outstanding job uh within the pandemic, being able to still find employment opportunities and upgrade some employment opportunities for some of this staff, uh, and uh for the people in the uh community. So last year, you know, we were faced with a lot of challenges. We felt it was important to continue to provide educational and social services to our youth and seniors. And as we begin to look down the uh, look at the light at the end of this tunnel, we will not be weary in our well-doing. Um, we'll uh look for more creative ways and innovative ways to serve our residents and we certainly solicit the assistance of this honorable body. Do I fast enough?
You you did it fast enough and Commissioner, uh, want to thank you for your efforts. Even during the pandemic, I saw you out and about uh still uh doing the job of your department, um, and including um uh Demone Smith, my former colleague, um, who um we have been sending people to and uh so pleased with the services uh that have been given. Uh, council members, any questions for the commissioner? Come, uh, Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Council President. Um, thank you, Commissioner and your team for all you've been doing even in the midst of the pandemic. And as Council President said, we've seen you out there, you and your team, continuing to deliver services and definitely appreciate your efforts. Um, talked to a couple of residents um recently regarding the services for seniors. And this may have been pre-pandemic. Um, what what, I know you just talked about reimagining and trying to be more creative in how you deliver services. What what, are are there any new things that you're gonna try to do once we're through this pandemic to help assist seniors? Because the one scene, couple of things that I talked to talked about a um program that's not really very robust and it's almost something that you can do at home. They can just sit there and it wasn't a lot of activities and things. Um, I certainly would like to see that more activities. I know that at the um um Gloria Park Center and at the um Edward Saunders Community Center, Edward Saunders under CIO, which is a different umbrella. Um, but the the same sentiments that, you know, again, it's not a robust program as far as activities for them. Do you have some ideas on what we can do and how we can improve that?
Right. And um, when you, when you say uh not robust, you know, we we were really focusing on protecting our seniors uh uh throughout the pandemic, you know, they were the most vulnerable population. So we had to come up, come up with creative ideas. So we had a painting party with the seniors and, you know, we've done other things to uh uh try to uh deter them from the social isolation that that they had. And we're still working on on projects uh uh with the uh seniors. Uh, we've had drive-up uh uh uh, what did we call it?
Covid shots.
Yeah, yeah, covid shots, uh, you know, we also had uh another um event just recently, a a drive-through well, with uh Councilmember Wyatt, I mean, with with Councilmember Wingo. We also uh had the drive-up Bingo, you know? So uh, we were trying to come up with as many creative and and we cer- certainly solicit the uh ideas of the co- of the community, you know, where we can actually do even more for our senior citizens. But with the uh pandemic in the uh form that it's in, we really have to protect the uh uh seniors.
Yeah, I I think my comments are related to our post-pandemic, not, you know, because I understand that that we we really needed to protect them. They were the most vulnerable. Um, but I know you just talked about reimagining and come up with ideas and some of the things you already did and done are pretty good. But is there a way of communicating with the seniors? Because um I I had, and I said, I've had, talked to a handful of seniors and I asked them, has their opinion ever been asked of what type of activities they wanted to do? And they said, no. And that's one of the things that bothers them. It seems as though they're taking on, taking on a ride and not really engaged in some of the things they would like to do. Because, you know, the one senior said, I could sit at home and look out my window. So I really hope, and this is not something that you may have right now, but because you talked about reimagining and how to reengage, I just wanted to know what your ideas were on, on what you were going to do as far as that goes. Because I think that's really important. You know, when you, when you're a senior, we're all coming up on that. I hope that someone cares enough about us to not just let us sit in a room, but really kind of take us out to the park. I know we had Broadwood Park. We got rails and trails. We got all these different places that seniors can go to be outside, especially as we come through this pandemic, that I'm hopeful that, you know, your insights and vision will create for a new experience for seniors in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Wingo?
Again, I, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, Council President, but again, just the level of communication and availability and responsiveness of this team, the Commissioner Barker and everyone else. It is just incredible how we've been able to communicate one with the other over this pandemic period to ensure that services are being met, needs are being met and services are being rendered, sorry, especially with the fine tuned attention that they're paying to the seniors. I just want to just really give you your accolades for that. And then, of course, we do and we have been and we will continue to send all of our folks who are looking for employment to the Buffalo Employment and Training Center. I know former council member Smith, Executive Director Smith is very proficient and very good at what he does. Notwithstanding the fact that his daughter, Aubrey, and my daughter, Janelle, are best friends. And then, Demone, they're probably on the phone right now dancing or something, doing a TikTok together. But it's just so you know, he has a great pulse on the community and I really appreciate his insight. I really appreciate how he's able to get folks to work who actually want to work. I was looking at the work stats and there was nothing that really stood out, except are there any things that you all have noticed in your department that you may be eligible for as far as reimbursement from the American Rescue Plan? I know that we won't get the guidelines until after we receive the grant. But at the same time, I'm curious if there are any work stats in your department that you may feel might be eligible due to this pandemic, you'd be able to get that reimbursement. If not, then if there's something you can prepare for, you can prepare that for, for Monday's work, for next week's workshop?
Yeah, I think we'd be better served for the workshop.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Barker, Commissioner. I appreciate it. And Council President, thank you again for the acknowledgement.
Thank you, Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Commissioner Barker, for being here. And I also want to give a shout out to two phenomenal members of those departments that I've worked with, even when I was a staffer, and that's Nicole Dry and Sue Lamedu. So thank you for the work that you guys do. For the budget hearings Monday, can you guys just give us a breakdown of how much and what funding gets funneled through that department for services? You know, how much of it is federal? How much of it is state? Because when a lot of folks think about the community services budget, I, I at least believe that it's a smaller amount that the city contributes and the large portion of the money that you guys work with that gets to the street is federal and state dollars. And I think that's important to just be able to break that down and articulate that. But I'll look forward to Monday. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anything else, councilmembers? All right, Commissioner. Thank you very much, sir. You and your team. Look forward to talking to you in the workshops.
Thank you.
All right. It is now 1:10. Part of the time we sign off, it'll be, let's say, 1:15. Let's just make it an even two o'clock. We'll return. This meeting will end and we will log back in at two o'clock and hear the rest of the departments all the way through so that we close this out and we are able to move forward with the committee of the whole. So until then, we will recess the committee of the whole, second by, not recess, I'm sorry, yeah, recess. The committee of the whole. Second by Councilmember Wyatt, moved by the Majority Leader Revere. We are in recess until two o'clock. Thank you.